Uh, so we'll call this and we have obviously a forum. And call this meeting to order. A standard statement, meeting is being recorded. If anyone else present is recording, please notify the chair at this time. Are you hearing anyone? Thank you. Okay, we'll do a roll call of members. So everyone who's attending now and people who are listening later to the recording know who we are. George Tolymses, um, vice chair.
Sarah Brown, incident planning board member.
Peter McIver, planning board member.
Jeff Sauer, vice chair.
Victor Michelle Clark. Director, director of planning and development.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, so now the next thing is the approval of the minutes from September. Yes, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I guess.
Thank you. Discussion.
Um, the only thing I noticed was, um, Mitchell and Joan who are here tonight, their names were not spelled correctly in the meeting minutes. Well, you could ask them for the correct spelling, I guess. Um.
Joan's middle name and Mitchell's, Mr. Space, space.
Yeah, both. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they had the mic. The name's wrong. So I know it's spelled wrong.
Anything else? I'll, uh, in the very first page, the planning board members president, uh, should mention that Jeff is the vice chair. Roles. On, in the middle of, uh, page three, and this is with appreciation of, uh, you were doing this remotely, Victor. There's, um, uh, uh, it, something tells off and says, I am lacking on in my notes on.
There was something about the, the superior versus regular or ordinary or I, I didn't really catch it. So I don't know if anyone else did. It didn't seem to be very important, but I was trying to get what everyone was saying, so.
Yeah, and with appreciation of how detailed you were trying to make these, I, it, it seems we can't leave it like that. Um, so I guess since we can't, we can't.
Well, Eric did provide the, the, the video. I did not have a chance to look at it. I guess I could, you know, take the time of re, look at the video, try and pick that piece out and.
Or we could make a determination that it's not totally need to be in the meeting minutes and strike this sentence.
Could you just stop it at, there was a change in language period? So at least we know what the what they were getting at, even if we don't know the specifics.
Yeah. So ended at change in language.
Yeah. That's okay.
And then there was a, uh, page four, again, the middle, there was a question mark, uh, at the end of, um, Mr. Norman made a comment on chapter eight, uh, colon or two dash one of the zoning code question mark. I don't know if that was.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was a, if that was a chapter of the zoning code. I just, I don't know what eight point four eight colon forty-two dash one is from. But it's.
Not from the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so that's what that was. Question. So there's something, maybe it was that.
Revised in two thousand and six, it must be the M D R.
Yes, it's the, yeah. It was the, um, impact statement section.
Okay. And change that M D R.
There's no other comment? All board members in the table approving as amended? Bye. Any against, any abstentions?
I will abstain. I was not present.
Thank you. Right. Next item is we have, um, a couple of discussion items, and the first one is a discussion with Joanna Whitney on housing and accessibility. And, uh, just for, um, transparency sake, I just wanted to mention, uh, that you had told me, Eric, that the mayor had had, uh, suggested this.
The mayor requested that she had put on the agenda.
Great. Welcome.
I have a couple of, uh, handouts for you, but I don't have enough for absolutely everyone to have their own one. So a couple of you will have to share. I know.
I can make copies. Yeah, I can make copies.
This is one. No, that's mine. I don't have that. We're rambling all over the place. This is one set. This is the second set. So you'll need one of each. And somebody will have to agree to look on with some.
Oh, okay.
This is far as my property. Do you have that too?
Well, maybe you did make enough.
I was smarter than I thought. Um, you're welcome. Um, before I get into my, uh, written spiel, I want to say I'm speaking from my own experience of disability, which is complex. It includes a variety of things. I don't just use a wheelchair as my experience. Uh, some of it has been lifelong and some of it has been more recent and uh, some of it shares nuances with, uh, people who fall under the same head, like neurodivergence, even though their experience in mine is likely to be profoundly different. And I think that it's important to say whatever I have to say today would be amplified by looking for feedback from other people with other experiences if we want to be as smart as we can be about housing in the future. So that said, um, safe and affordable housing is a fundamental necessity to live any kind of stable life. For able-bodied people, as long as housing is affordable, that includes a wide range of housing options, including the choice of living in large cities or small towns, single-family homes, townhouses and duplexes, apartments in buildings of various sizes, uh, from large with many floors, um, and others in older houses where there are two, three, four, uh, that have been divided up, basement or in-law apartments, uh, occupied also by the owners or A D U's, trailer parks, any number of other kinds of housing. For people with disabilities, the majority of these options simply do not exist. As a community, I lost my place. Um, as a community, we continue to use housing models developed decades, if not generations ago, predicated on the expectation that residents will have able bodies always and forever. Lived experience and demographic data consistently show us the expectation we design, we use designing housing is simply false. While it's common for people to go through their lives, never or rarely meeting people with disabilities, data show that there is a significant mismatch between the number of people in the U S who live with some form of disability and the number an average person is likely to meet going about their daily lives. According to the C D C, more than a quarter of the population has some form of disability and people living with disabilities that impact their mobility make up about twelve point two percent of Americans. To put this in perspective, about nine, uh, ten point nine percent of the U S population is left-handed. And polls in the U S estimate about seven percent of the population identify as members of the L G B T Q plus community. While some people meet more or fewer individuals from either of these groups, it is unusual to have never met someone who's left-handed. If someone has never met a person who identifies as L G B T Q, the absence reflects social prejudice and strategies of hiding one's identity for safety's sake. In general, everyone should be meeting someone with a disability more often than members of any other minority group, bar none. Meeting someone who uses a wheelchair or other mobility aids should be more common than meeting someone who is left-handed or gay. If you don't meet people living with a disability on a regular basis, a large reason for that is our infrastructure, especially our housing stock. Researchers from the Universal Design Project have found that only five percent of housing in the U S has any degree of accessible features and only point one five percent are wheelchair accessible. We do a poor job of tracking the amount of accessible housing in any specific community. Nonetheless, we know that communities in the Northeast tend to have older housing stock. Older buildings typically lack accessible features and tend to be expensive to remodel. When older houses are divided up into apartments, they can be very idiosyncratic in design and skew even more heavily towards design that requires able bodies excluding people with disabilities. Oftentimes, in current conversations about housing, about the housing crisis, we lean on government regulations about A D A requirements and forget that people living with disabilities are people first. When you talk about a housing development that has one or two or however many mandated number of accessible units, but do not ask whether all the units could be visitable by someone with a disability, you are participating in a generation's long habit of assuming people with disabilities do not have friends and neighbors who want to include them when they are planning a birthday party or celebrating a holiday or to watch the game or whatever, the way able-bodied friends and families are included. When you are discussing infrastructure like parking or sidewalks or crosswalks, but do not thoughtfully consider the difference that disability makes, you are at risk of coming up with solutions that work for people who are able-bodied, but put people with disabilities at risk like crosswalks in atypical places without clear lights to alert traffic. When plans are being discussed and debated, it is important to reach out to people who have appropriate, preferably lived experience to ensure that Greenfield is not continuing to build for able bodies only or primarily. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Questions or comments?
Well, I, I just want to say thank you for being here, um, because you probably know this, but the majority of the board is almost brand new. So it's good to, you know, have that be part of our educational process. Yeah.
So could you talk about how the city of Greenfield currently incorporates, you know, procedural way those concerns? There's a commission.
There's the Commission on Disability Access. Um, I bel- I believe that there's been um, some turnover in the commission in the last few years so that there's a mix of people who've been on the commission longer and some who are relatively new. I am not familiar with every single person, so I can't speak to how deep their, uh, bench of experience is, uh, or how broadly they represent different kinds of understandings of disability.
Maybe a question for you, Eric. Is there a review capacity of that commission in a stage of a development process or?
Yes, actually, um, most applications um, for new development is sent to the C D A for review.
Okay. They have what kind of power?
Um, just advisory. You know, they can make suggestions and, uh, and the, the library project's a great example. Uh, they reviewed the plans and, and there are several changes happened because of their review.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I would like to kind of use the library project as an example. Um, I was asked to be on the advisory panel for the library from the get-go and, uh, there were other people uh, also on that panel who, you know, from very early on were advocating and educating the, the everybody who was involved with that project. Nonetheless, there were problems, you know, the day that it opened, there were changes that needed to be made and that is to a certain extent par for the course with any new construction, but really speaks to the importance of having that information um, feeding into projects early and throughout the project to really get the kind of final, well, not only the final housing product, but the final community that we would like to see Greenfield be.
Can be overwhelming to to compare the status quo to what is actually fully equitable. I have a small business next door. Then we have some members who have visual impairments, including complete blindness in some cases, and the amount of retrofitting that ideally would be necessary to make it fully accessible and it was, it, it's just, it's hard to imagine how you can get that done. There are technologies now that allow you to work with an old building and use R R F I V sensors and like a certain type of fitness. I think some people are just, they just can't wrap their minds around it. So there's so, you're right, there's so many different types of disabilities and, and so, and sometimes each one has its own set of standards and requirements and we put them all together, it's overwhelming. But what is your suggestion to make the next incremental step towards doing a better job in that front?
I think there's, there's two kinds of changes that need to happen. One is structural. One is the literal built stuff. But the other is more of an attitudinal shift. And I see that already starting in Greenfield. Um, it has been going on for a while. And so as far as getting Greenfield to be a community that is interested in supporting this kind of change, I'm very optimistic about it. Changing the structural stuff is more challenging. I don't know what the percentage of, of relatively new buildings to buildings that are uh, built a hundred years or more ago. Um, I don't know what that percentage is, but if we're not having um, the kinds of conversations that allow for creative problem solving and recognizing we're not where we want to be and we're not going to get where we want to be tomorrow. Um, but we can have conversations that create space for imagining what that might be. And we already do that with other issues. The sustain, sustainability commission or the human rights commission, none of them are, you know, where they want to be. But all of them are engaging in really robust conversations about how do we get from where we are to where, where at least better or where we hopefully uh, are in a place that we're proud to pass off to future generations.
One of the most compelling perspective for me is to talk about the visitation effort, because then you realize it isn't just having a house that that person can live in, but if they want to participate in all of society, they need to be able to use all the spaces, public spaces is for one thing, but then also private spaces. Um, so that, that feels like a really strong argument that it's hard for anyone to push back on. And then they also the idea that people's abilities and mobility changes through their life too. So.
I know very few people who are seniors of whatever age of seniors who identify as a person with a disability, although many over time talk about difficulty with mobility or difficulty with other kinds, you know, their vision or cognitive issues or whatever it is. Um, I think part of that is because we associate those changes as a normal part of aging as opposed to something that is atypical in somebody who is in their thirties or teens or a child. Um, but a lot of those experiences, if they had known people sooner, um, this is, this is how, oh, I know somebody who they couldn't do stairs and this is what they did. And maybe that gives me an idea of what I could do. Um, or they, you know, I knew somebody who wasn't here at all, and here's how they managed their lives. If we never have those shared life experiences, when we get to a point where that's a reality, both in our own life or a family members, we don't have a rich, uh, pool of ideas to draw on, uh, to brainstorm, how are we going to, uh, address whatever issues that come along over, over the course of a lifetime.
My last comment would be, um, I think that there's, you, maybe you can attribute, uh, you could possibly attribute a lot of the lack of accessibility to just ignorance on the part of builders, regulate, regulators. And what, I mean, there's going to be pushback if there's a competition between costs and accommodations. And that's why we have mandates. Someone's got to draw a line somewhere. See, people aren't going to comply at all. But there are things like with sustainability where you could do it one way or the other way. Not that different of a cost if you just knew that that was something you needed to do. If you just made that door a little wider, for example, or change the doorknob. I mean, some of them are pretty simple. Some of them to educating people on the low hanging fruit. You can make the incremental steps and also build some awareness.
Right. It's always cheaper to do it right the first time than to have to go back and fix it later because now standards have shifted to a point where you know, we're further down the road with greenhouse gases and we really need to get serious. Or we're further down the road in terms of living with an aging population and growing disability uh, rights movement that are just being that much more insistent that, yeah, we need places to live too. Um.
So is there a channel to reach builders and developers and building department? I don't know. Because I mean, the library is the biggest, most complicated project that we've done in a long time. But there's a lot of smaller, less expensive and complicated projects that impact people's lives too. Like, is there a, like, what, what do we do with this information? Is there a recommendation?
That I, I'm not quite sure, you know, I don't really know what the pipeline in Greenfield would be. Uh, maybe the starting point is to begin to ask people who you know, are engaged in different levels to see whether they're open to having some kind of, developing some kind of a uh, pipeline for information and, and conversations around this issue.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's important, uh, in addition to including a variety of people who work on infrastructure of different kinds, to include people who represent different kinds of lived experience with, with disabilities so that you don't end up with, okay, we've got the, um, wheelchair access fine, but people who can't hear are now having issues because we didn't think about that at all. Um, so, um, thinking about how to pull that conversation together would be a start.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll share that professionally, I'm a rehabilitation counselor by training and, um, I know that we were sensitized to think ourselves to be fortunate to be temporarily, temporarily able-bodied. And, um, I'm very familiar with the history of the A D A, which was a remarkable improvement, um, for folks with disabilities. But I appreciate your point that that sets minimum standards. Um, and one thing, you know, as far as what can be done and what has been done at the planning board level is a number of, um, uh, projects that have come before us, the, um, the doorways had to be accessible. But it wasn't required that they have, um, that they have electric, uh, opening sensors or buttons or something like that. And, and that can be very difficult. You might have a smooth pathway, but opening, you know, and
Right.
the doorways and stuff like that. So I know the planning board was able to negotiate with a lot as, as a condition or it's in the process sensitizing the builders to the importance of that, even though it is an expense, added expense, but it's, it's the, the accessibility is significantly provided. So that's one small concrete example that we've worked on before. So you were going to say something.
And I think it has come up a couple of times in site plan review where we talk, we do discuss, you know, the design of the buildings that are planned to be built. It's a little bit tough because at that point the design has mostly been made. That's my understanding. So I wonder if we could have something earlier in the process, maybe, maybe not, but, um, or something kind of like an educational component that is standard for, you know, every housing project that we have, like, you know, pointing them to, um, universal design, something like uh, like a handout or, um, I mean, that would be very basic, but, um, something that we have on hand ready to go already.
There are resources around the state that you might be able to draw on, like the office, the Massachusetts Office on Disability came out, uh, really early in the discussion about the new library, uh, and did an assessment of the old library to really do a shakedown on what it would cost to, if they want, if the community chose to stay with the old library, what that would mean in terms of making it, bringing it up to what it needed to be. Um, and they seem to be very knowledgeable about those kinds of nuts and bolts. Um, that might be a resource that you could do periodic, you know, like, like uh, seminars or something where people could come and, and, uh, learn about some of the, the changing, some of the sort of general stuff you need to know, but also how things are changing because, uh, new technology or new building options have become available or any number of the other kinds of things that come into play about how to approach infrastructure. One of the things that I think is, um, we don't, we're still really on the early stages of, um, the pandemic. One way to understand it, it was a global mass disabling event. People are still in the fairly early stages of understanding what that means and how that plays out for different people depending on, you know, some people are living with long COVID. Some people, they don't have long COVID, but they, during their, their experience of of COVID infections, got permanent uh, physical damages of different kinds. And so, um, they're not going to go back to, you know, they were heroic early responders before we had any vaccines. And we don't really have anything to help them pick up their lives and go forward now that they're living with the consequences of early COVID infections. So there's enough people who are in that category. I don't know that we really have a full handle on who they are or what their specifics are. But I would be surprised if that doesn't become part of the conversation at some point going forward, just because of the nature of um, the circumstances and the number of people impacted.
From a planning perspective, I mean, one thought is make sure it's addressed in our conference of plan, master plan. I'm sure it is supposed to be on some superficial level, but make that be real. The thing that's coming to my mind is it's, it's one thing to require accommodation and a accessibility in a new building, but once it's in that building, it's invisible. Like, it's not like there's a, there's no recognition that that building has done what so few other buildings do, which is, okay, there's a building. So it doesn't help the, the broader cause. Uh, there's been, there was some system for, you know, it's happened in Greenfield in the past, like the, the water fountains thing. If anyone remembers, you put little signs on all the storefronts that would allow you to refill your water bottle. All of a sudden we have an awareness of the need for fresh water and the availability of resources like that. If he could put, and the recorder could write a thing about just audit downtown. What is it like to navigate downtown with different disabilities? What buildings are better and worse? Not to shame anybody, but just to raise awareness. And then if someone does something small to make their doorway work better or whatever else, celebrate that. And somewhere that's, it seems like some pretty low hanging fruit that.
I think that, um, the whole issue of shame is really important to be upfront about. Nobody wants to shame people for doing that. None of us chose the environment that we're living with. And we're all having to figure out, okay, somebody two hundred years ago designed this building and we don't have those same values. For, for many people, depending on their disability, the infrastructure makes it like we're still living in the nineteenth century with nineteenth century values and, and a lot of people who are able-bodied would like to be allies, but don't know how. And that, that dynamic of shame gets in the way of those conversations. We'd be, we should be having the same smart conversation around people who are our friends and family, our neighbors who are neurodivergent or who have any other kind, you know, they're, they're in recovery or they're, um, uh, any number of other kinds of ways that we could just build for a community. that is closer aligned with what we would like our community to be. And that many people who are able-bodied would like our community to be, if only they knew how to get from where we are to that.
Last thought I have, I really appreciate it, the point you're making about attitude and awareness. So you were talking about getting early on in the process. And Eric, you talked about the Commission on Disability Access often, sometimes advisory. And I wondered when they're called in, or I know the earliest I'm worried about projects is the tech review group that goes over things. I didn't know if there's a place in there for some input from someone from an accessibility point of view, just.
That's a good idea. Yeah, it's optional tech review. But somebody from the Commission on Disability Access could be a part of that so that projects that come in early, they can make some comments about it and maybe some change would happen.
Would you explain what that is?
Eric, do it better than me.
Tech review group?
Yeah.
The technical review group. So it's a, it's optional and not many communities do it. MARPA, Massachusetts, Southeastern Regional Planning agencies did an article like a decade ago on Greenfield because we were one of the few communities that offer a technical review group meeting. It's, it's before somebody submits a formal application to a land use board, they go before this, it's mostly city staff, building inspector, fire prevention officer, planner, conservation agent, engineer, licensing. And now we should add someone from the Commission on Disability Access. And they present their project either preliminarily, a conceptual stage or preliminary stage before formal plans are are drawn up. And it's a great way to, for the, the city staff to provide comments. So that when they do go before a land use board, it goes smoothly and everything that's desired or unregulated is done.
Okay. Yeah. That definitely seems like a good thing to do to add in.
It's optional, which is, could make it mandatory and that would, but people like the optional. Yeah, making it, you know, right now it's just optional. But I like the idea of adding a member from CDA to consider.
So it's optional, but what, do you have an estimate of how common it is to use that?
Any project for new development, I recommend they do it. And 60, 75% of them do it.
Oh, okay. That's significant.
So it gets sent to the CDA for any new building that the public's going to go to. So they can comment on it. If it's something like a special permit to keep a go or a special permit to, you know, keep it shedded within the separate, of course, they don't. Just projects that new development is being done or significant redevelopment of existing buildings. And then they get the comment down, ADA issues.
I would, I guess, underscore that the, the, the best thing to do is to start with conversations because that's where you can most cheaply change, you know. You know, when you're at the stage of it's all imagination, you can change anything for like just the cost of, of the time for people who are being paid to be in the room. It's when you start actually thinking, you know, as you're moving towards making it real, that changes, you, you know, if there's a problem with the properties being considered, or you've already got architectural designs drawn up or shovels are already in the ground, that at any of those later points, it becomes much more expensive to go back because, oh, somebody realized something needs to change. One of the things that I thought was really smart about the library project is they had the advisory panel first and had us go around to lots of libraries that were recent builds and then have conversations about the pros and cons and really thinking rigorously about how, what we saw compared with what we want in Greenfield. And that by the time it morphed into an actual building committee and design plans and stuff like that, a lot of those conversations had already happened.
Any last comments or questions from the board?
I don't have any comments or questions. I'd just like to thank you for your time. Perspective.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is about the proposed zoning amendments. I had, before we get into going through these one by one, I had a couple of higher level clarifications I wanted to ask. The first is that the, the list we got in August was also five, but it included something about rural houses and that was dropped. I think, okay.
Yeah, let me, I can comment on that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Two things. One, the definition of multifamily in our ordinance includes townhouses. So, and the board, we never really finalized whether we want to delve into that. So time wise, because right now I'm just one person planning, I'm an agent left. We didn't have time to do additional research on townhouses, but it is already defined in our definition of multifamily. So you can do townhouses currently in the city of Greenfield. So I did not address that issue, but added one that came upon that was an issue that was very, you know, it's a significant issue and that is medical clinics and centers in the downtown district not being allowed by right. And there's many of them that exist there that weren't permitted. So this amendment will put forth to address that issue. Because right now you can do a home occupation and have a doctor's office in a residential district. But you can't do that by right in the central commercial district. Doesn't make sense. You know, maybe back when the ordinance was initially conceived, the major change in 1989, everyone wanted to preserve their main street for retail and that type of use, but that world has changed and moved on. And so they should be allowing it by right in the downtown district.
So that's the new fifth item on the list.
About allowing medical clinics, centers by right.
Thanks. And I also wanted to clarify, because I was, I had an exchange with Eric about this, that all five of these have been initiated by Counselor Garrett. So the clock is running, is that?
That's correct. It wasn't the initial intent, but, but that's what happened. And no, no problem. We're going to schedule a joint public hearing for, over on the 7th. We held it at John Zion Community Center because we, we think there's going to be a crowd. And this room probably wouldn't be able to handle, basically, there's only 35 people. So yes, they have been initiated officially and the time clock has started.
And even though the, the one on the ADUs was submitted on a different date, they're still all on the same.
Yes, because the, the
Initiation.
The initiation included ADUs.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to get that framework.
So, verified, what are we supposed to, so this came to us from the council?
Yes.
The counselor.
Yeah.
Counselor.
And the council, because he initiated, the council has then initiated it, that's what I'm counsel.
Got it. And initiated, it means
That declines.
Set into motion to proclaim and everything, and then there'll be a vote to adopt or if it gets amended. So, so our responsibility, our job is to issue a endorsement or recommended changes?
I can answer it. Tonight, we're just discussing.
Okay.
Because there's going to be a joint, we wouldn't do a recommendation till we have, anytime there's an initiation from whatever source, there's a joint public hearing and that's going to be at our next meeting in November.
Including us.
And it'll be our meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. And the EDC, Economic Development Committee of the Council. And so then we will make a recommendation.
Like with the cluster development recently.
Right.
Is there?
Yep.
Yeah. So, so we could make suggestions or request changes or clarifications, whatever, then it's still a fluid document, it's still changing, or is it locked in? Since it's been submitted in some formal way?
There's some leeway to change the wording, but we'd have to look at it case by case.
Okay.
If it's very significant change, then it probably have to be repost and restart the time.
Yeah.
But there is some leeway in there and we'll, we'll look at it, see, you know, if it does, you know, I mean, if it's a significant change, then it probably would have to be a public hearing process we'd have to start over.
But you could be a judge of what's significant, what's not, at least for, for starters.
Yes.
Okay.
Based on my experience, you know, I'll try to do my best.
Okay, great. Good framing. So the first one is proposal to allow multifamily dwelling by right to the site plan review in the semi-residential zoning district. So it's currently allowed by right in
In the central commercial district.
Central commercials, or just expands it to the two sections of semi-residential that are that touch on the central commercial. Any comments or questions about that one? From board members?
Why only, why not the RA zone as well? Why not other zones? Are we just talking amongst ourselves or asking questions to?
We can, we have Counselor Garrett here as a proponent, so we could, we could ask for clarification.
I guess maybe some clarifications to why only that district and not consider other districts as well, either in whole or through overlay or some other mechanism.
Yes. Should I come forward? Is that helpful?
Sure. Well, especially if you heard on the microphone.
Yeah.
So, thanks.
So the genesis of all of this was the Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee that Eric and I sit on. And so this is a recommendation from that plan, as are all of these other zoning amendments. And so I would be perfectly happy to see multifamily housing allowed in the RA district. But that's not what the master plan suggested in the draft that we're working on. So I frankly just, I thought it made sense to go with a pre-existing document rather than just kind of writing it and being like, let's just do housing everywhere, but no, you know, backing. And so Mr. Toreg was kind enough to sit down with me and kind of talk to me about the process. It's frankly quite new for me. So, you know, I am cutting my teeth on this as it happens. So that's, that's the basic answer to the question. Good.
I can give a little bit of history on it as well. When I first came here, there was something called Commonwealth Capital. It was a scoring thing on SmartGrove. And you did certain things, you got a score and, or Thantinella scored number one. We scored pretty high every year. We did, I think it was like six, seven, eight years long. One of the things on there is you get points if you allow multifamily development in, in many districts. So initially I tried to get it in many districts. Voted down by city council, town council at that time. And basically the only district they allowed it in by right was CC, which is still remains there so today. So it didn't make sense, central, I mean, that semi-residential because it touches the CC city districts. It would be a one contiguous area that allows multifamily by right.
It's allowed, it's allowed anywhere. You have to go with a special permit.
Right now is allowed in districts by special permit. We're talking about by rights.
Exactly. As I thought, it's still allowed.
Yes.
But you just have to get a special permit.
Correct.
Okay. That's what I thought.
And a good, a good question I always find to ask is, is there any downside to this change? I, I wasn't aware of any, but.
The easier it is, the better.
Take it.
The easier it is, the better for us. And a lot of developers don't want to go through the process of a discretionary permit like it's supposed to permit. And so it inhibits some type of development. So by right, it's, it's much easier.
I would, so.
You can just stay up here.
Okay.
Thanks.
I think, I agree that it, so that, I'm just trying to pull the map up here. Sorry. The implications of expanding it just implications of expanding it, like full cloth to the RA district. And that suddenly becomes half the city, if not more. See why that might be too much to bite off. But the commercial districts are good locations with low, often not much impact on the surroundings. They're already on high capacity roadways. Commercial's not a pretty weak market these days. Not always the highest and best use of land that could otherwise be dense housing, which is much more valuable. So I would suggest considering adding LC and GC. That all the Cs.
Without.
As a, that'd be my personal, i- if we want to push it further, that seems like the next bite to take, but not bite into the I districts. Maybe not compete with the H district. There's a lot of commercial and, and those are the corridors that we might like to see get revitalized. Housing is a great way to bring some new investment and activity to those corridors.
Without speaking to the merits of that, let me ask you, Eric, that would be, in the current situation, that would be a substantive.
That would be one that we'd have to start.
Yeah.
Over. Because it's adding two districts, a significant area, increasing the effect of that.
As a context, I agree to that. I predict that we're not going to fully understand the ADU legislation in time for, that's going to take some time to figure out. There's going to be some things that we've missed. I'll point some out. There's going to be clarifications over time. So there, this might be a period where there's multiple attempted amendments to the zoning code. So it's me telling myself, we don't have to get everything we want all at once. I believe that.
Same goes with your townhouses. We see how it works in the commercial, but looks good and we try to expand it in another future lead.
Sure.
Piece of time.
Yeah. And this is a nice achievable piece. It's already, it's important that it's been referenced in other planning documents. So it's, it's just an expression of the community's will already. And that's the point of those planning documents. A lot of people attended those meetings and their top priority was always housing. Like that was very consistent in every meeting I went to.
So on that first item, multifamily and semi-residential, any other amendments or questions from board members? Or again, we're not making recommendations tonight, but we move on. The second one is to raise the maximum number of units per building allowed in new multifamily dwellings. And specifically, it's to raise it from 24 to 50 dwelling units with, and raise from for a single primary entrance from six to 10. So overall, we'd go from 24 to 50 cap. And for a single entrance, we'd go from six to 10 units.
Per building, not necessarily per parcel or per project or per property. Building. Is there any magic to the 24 that it was and, or, and or the 50 that it's proposed to be? Or the six and the ten?
Yeah. So I don't know where the 24 came from. It's been in there since 89. And so I don't know the logic behind that. My logic was to just double it, pretty much essentially double it and start that the conversation.
Yeah.
Same thing with the, you know, I mean, did that number 10, is it scientific in any way? No. It was six and I don't even think that number is, I don't know where that came from. It's not in the building code. So I just changed it to 10 as a starting point discussion.
Maybe Counselor Garrett or one of the planning experts here in the room could explain the, just the concept of a, a single primary entrance.
So I actually got, so I went to a housing Greenfield meeting and, you know, talked about these zoning amendments and I, I believe her name is Alyssa from Rural Development Inc.
Oh, Alyssa.
Yeah. She actually looked at this one and was happy to see it because it would help her with her work with RDI. But questioned the inclusion of that kind of clause about the entrance entirely. She said, why do we need this? The building code already addresses entrances and stairwells. And she requested that if it was possible to just remove the reference to the number of units served by any number of entrances. So I don't know if that counts as a substantial change. I would imagine it might. But I, again, I trust your expertise on this, Eric. So, but that was her request. And she had a couple of other ones. I don't recall them off the top of my head. But that was the main one she mentioned that kind of stuck, struck me. It was like, is this even necessary to be there? Or is it, as you said, not really scientifically based?
Based on occupancy of the building, the number of rooms.
Right. Yeah. And so.
No matter how many units you gotta divide into, it's how many people could be in it.
Right. Right.
The building code definitely addresses that issue. So, so in my opinion, if you eliminate that sentence, making things, it's making things less strict. I think that it would now require any public hearing for that change. My opinion.
You'd make Alyssa happy if it's gone.
For the board to discuss if we wanted to eliminate that provision, but.
I think we don't need this clause at all because we have a building code. And the things that we care about are massing building size and scale. The size of a unit is the interior of the building. I mean, you could have four big units, you could have eight little units. I mean, what's the difference from a planning perspective? And the building code. And the building code makes it a safe building. Building code decides how close buildings should be together. In a typical multifamily buildings in larger markets are over a hundred units a building. People don't do fifty unit buildings because it's not very efficient. The City Wilson's building is sixty, even if I know that, because the zoning board can allow if they want, according to this, fifty. More than fifty, I guess. So, so you can get some allowance, a waiver for that, but it's just friction. So I, I don't see why the number of units is relevant in this context. I would suggest taking the whole clause away if that's not too big of a change.
You know, if I had to guess the logic of why they put that in there in the first place. Probably just to adjust the character of a town environment. You know, they didn't want multi-high-rise buildings and it's probably the issue why they did it this way. Uh, so that, that should be factored in, but yeah, if you're limited debt provision entirely. I think it could be done.
The, the reason, I think it's a minor change is because.
Well, no, Gordo, that is significant.
The other regulations, the massing, the bulk, the height, those do what you just said. They control the character, the height, the scale of the building. So you still might not be able to build. This isn't saying you can build fifty units wherever you want. You still have to follow all of the other rules and the building code. And so it probably won't change anything. It'll just be one last waiver or variance that someone has to get for a project that otherwise would have been allowable.
I'll, I'll just comment. Um, here's someone chime in and, and I was gonna ask if there were, th- these are gonna be going for a public hearing um, next month, but if someone had some pressing point they wanted to make, I was gonna ask because someone might not be able to attend. Next time, for example. Um, so the, the phrase you're talking about eliminating is in the first sentence, putting a period after units. And the rest of that sentence would be eliminated?
He's talking about striking four entirely.
Yeah, also the building code, same. That doesn't make any sense. For, that's a, that's a building code issue, not a. It just means that there's that many pure places you can do multifamily.
I'm, I'm sorry, Eric, striking what entirely?
Yeah, so uh, this entire paragraph four, strike the entire thing is what he suggests. And it limitate that from the ordinance completely. In other words, no limit on the number of units in a building. Which would be restricted by height, height restrictions.
Yeah, and the units per square feet per, I mean, there's all sorts of other things that control the number of units too.
Exactly.
Area per unit. I mean, there's, this is a redundant requirement that probably isn't consistent with how those others operate in a given situation. So there's better rules already in place to do this exact same thing, but let's not have an additional rule that just muddies the water.
I agree with that. The other thing I should mention though is the building code number is definitely different and each structure shall be separated by a minimum of forty feet. That's greater than what the distance would be from the building code.
By a lot.
By a lot.
Yeah.
Ten feet by the building.
Unless you upgrade the.
Let's see, the fire for separation, exactly. But no fire separation, ten feet.
Curtain wall. Stranglers.
I just wanted to make the board aware of that, that's all. Building code is ten feet.
So if.
Are you going to be taking any comments?
Yes, I was just saying that, yep.
One, one second.
I was gonna do that later in the meeting after we get through this.
Yes.
Thanks, Al. Awesome.
And I agree with Jeff, but we've got other rules on the books and to govern what building could be, like, why do we need to tell somebody? You can only put fifteen in that building. I think you put seventy-five reasonable on. I don't understand. How does it mean all the other code requirements? Why do we want to put another another hurdle to jump? That's not what we're here for.
The, the forty-foot one, I mean, there's gonna be, the fire department's gonna want to have some access ways that are gonna be more than ten feet, eight feet, they're gonna be twenty-four feet or something. There's all sorts of reasons why the buildings are going to be spaced in ways that are logical, that are based on science, so to speak, based on fire safety and, and those things that are more relevant are. This, this just feels like an arbitrary number. The, the, the six units per entrance, that's just like a, there's a typology, a three-story building with two units on each floor. It's like, we don't want things bigger than that. That's where that number just probably came from. But again, we have other rules that control those types of situations.
So, so I'll raise a procedural question because we're talking about significant changes to this um, this proposal that is in the pipeline. As, as we see it here. Um, and um, so rather than editing that paragraph, there's discussion here about eliminating the paragraph and.
Yeah, it's probably a significant change, eliminating those three provisions in that one paragraph.
I mean, it's fruitful discussion and we could always, if we thought it was, if the board had a consensus that it this wasn't a good idea because you should just eliminate that, we could always offer a negative recommendation. And, you know, pass along that we thought, you know, something different should be done instead. So.
I personally would be more in favor of doing that, just recommending a negative on this current change and leaning towards reintroducing it with the changes that Jeff spoke of.
Who you guys said?
I agree with Jeff's idea. Can I, like, do I, who owns these amendments? Like, can I say like, yeah, Jeff's right, I'd like to withdraw this amendment? Or is it like in the wild now and this clock you're talking about, this is all new to me, so I don't really know all the details about how it works?
It's, it's weird that things can just appear.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden we can't really do much.
Like.
Whoever put it forward can pull it back if they want.
Yeah, I'd be.
You could withdraw.
Can I just do that here? Do I have to like write you a letter or something? Like, how does it work?
It may have to go to the city council.
Council, send it to the council, you know.
Well, I mean, the city clerk's office, you may have to officially withdraw from, at the city clerk's office.
We can see how this goes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If they're all flawed in some fundamental way, then yeah, I, but if this, if this is the only one and this is going to kill the whole thing, maybe there's a compromise that doesn't cross the line and, you know, it's one of those things we make some progress towards and then we come back to it.
I'd also be perfectly fine passing it with like the stairwells taken out. And, you know, coming back and eliminating it entirely later if that's, you know, a possibility, but.
Another procedural question, Eric. These are, these are all initiated at the same time, but they're five independent. Um, things, right? They're not being approved as a package.
No, each one will need to be voted on separately.
Right, right. So they wouldn't have to all be withdrawn or something like that. That was the intention.
Yeah, you could withdraw one. You don't have to be happy to do that. I just need to figure out how. So go see Kathy tomorrow, Dr. Rambato.
But if it did stay, I mean, Eric's idea of, so doubling the units, that means a five-story building with ten units on each floor. That's not a huge building, but it's not totally unreasonable. You could take the forty feet and make twenty feet. Just do something that's incremental, it's compromised.
Yeah.
If, if starting it over isn't on the table, you'll miss the opportunity to make it better.
I mean, is that a suggestion we want to pursue? Amending, removing that sentence, changing the minimum of buildings or between structures and then putting it forward.
And that would be back.
It's still a step forward.
But we'd be arbitrary. We're just picking it up. We want the building separated by twenty. There's no rhyme, there's no reason, there's no logic. You know, let the site review, let the fire departments, the health departments, other people who have need have access to the building to say, we, we need a thirty-foot driveway here. We don't need anything over here because we can access it from this side. So let, I don't think we do that. I don't think we put in arbitrary things because we think they should be. That's, that's a zoning role and the building codes and the experts on the fire departments to say, look, this is what we need to keep this building safe and to have it reasonable. That's, or should be, not us. Being arbitrary.
I'm also trying to understand, coming back to what you were saying, what was the rationale initially for any of these parameters? You know, that, I assume there was some purpose to it, to.
As, as we learned with the cluster development, there's not, I mean, sometimes you just need a number.
I'm sure there were people who thought in the past that the zoning law wasn't enough and they wanted to put more on it. So that's how they felt. So that's probably the rationale behind. Someone wanted more because they felt they needed.
Or there was a project, they probably made this have, this was probably a, a an inhibitor of, of development because there was some project that happened that people didn't like, so they made all the thresholds just below whatever that project was. So they, well, that project began.
Right.
I've seen that happen before.
Very possible.
So should we move on to the next one? And I see a hand up there too. I am going to ask Republican, whether people can just hold their thoughts uh, till we get through these. Um, thanks. Um, and the next one is to amend uh, section two hundred dash seven point one zero of the zoning ordinance to allow first-floor dwellings in mixed-use lots. And one thing I wanted to point out in the materials, supporting materials, zoning amendment number three, it gives a different section. I think that was a typo. Um, I think two hundred dash seven point one oh is correct. And that's a limited commercial section.
Yeah, so it's two hundred dash four.
Um, so uh, I had to read through this a few times to get it, but the idea is that the current language, it identifies what's the first floor level. That's the street level facing the street with the highest traffic use and there could be no residences on that level, on that floor. And the amended language would mean there could be units, but not on the side with the highest traffic use. Lots of questions about that.
The, the, the reason it was written the way it was before was because people wanted more ground floor retail.
More retail space.
And that's fine, but sometimes you have a large building and the only logical place for ground, like say it's a building, it's, it's a long bar building and short edge is on Main Street and the rest of it's not on Main Street. But you're making it so you can't have any housing on the first floor of the whole street level which faces the street. It might be interpreted as the whole first floor can't be housing, even if it's not a viable place for retail.
Existing language.
Yeah.
Yes, that's it.
And that's not a good idea anywhere these days. We just see a lot of, they can retail or you see retail that's designed in a way that's never going to get leased. Because it's, it's just they did the absolute minimum they could do or they, it's such a big floor plate and they don't demise it because they are waiting for the big multinational company to fill it. So the mom and pops can't afford the rent. It hasn't been invested enough to be part carved up into units that are small enough for them to, to deal with. So at this time, this point in time, I mean, you don't have to do a mixed-use building. You can just do a housing building, right?
Correct.
There's no place where you can't do housing unless you have retail. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So if you want to have retail, you should be allowed to only put it where it makes sense and not be required to put it everywhere. That's what it's saying now.
Mm-hmm.
It's also the really important added benefit of accessibility, you know, so first-floor units are rare to come by, you know, and we had this whole conversation with planners, you had this whole conversation with Joanna about creating more opportunities for folks to have accessible buildings. And this is the exact kind of place where that could happen. And that's huge. Good point.
Any other comments or questions about that proposal?
I would, to rephrase it a little bit and just say first-floor dwellings shall not be allowed on the first floor of the frontage facing the street with the highest traffic. I mean, frontage is more of a technical term for.
Can you say that again, or?
That's it. First, allowed on the first floor of the frontage or the building frontage facing the street with the highest traffic use.
Just a rephrasing.
Just the word side. It's frontage is just the technical term for side.
So why should we have technical language instead of language that can be understood by everyone?
Probably because, well, I, I would say we should have technical language in the zoning because frontage is probably the term used elsewhere. It's consistent. Side isn't a word that's used in other similar applications. I agree with the other one.
Frontage means that you have the legal frontage on a road till, till you have a building lot. That's frontage.
Yeah.
It's a frontage.
And side is.
Inside is something entirely different, so.
That would you, so just frontage, a more confusing term than side from, from an enforcement standpoint?
Not on the street side with the highest traffic.
I don't know if you need the word side at all.
Be.
Yeah, along the street with.
Oh, yeah, maybe they were just removing the word on the street with the highest traffic. Get rid of the word side.
Yeah, along, along the street with the highest traffickers.
Along the street with the highest, yeah.
Just to clarify, does that mean like if a building is, so it's making the distinction between the lot and the building because the building might not have the same dimensions as the lot? Is that why we're not using the word frontage?
Yeah, not using the word frontage because frontage is a, is a legal term for that you have the legal, you're, you have legal frontage on it. You can't build without frontage. You gotta have area, frontage. And it meets setbacks. So the three zoning things you gotta meet. So it's a zoning term that.
Okay.
It means that you have the frontage on a road to be able to build that lot.
Okay. So that, I would defer to Eric's definition. I think I've used it differently to just refer to the building case and, you know, what street is it associated with, but it sounds like the legal definition is more what Eric was saying.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other kind of comments on that proposal? What I want to suggest, we have in our materials, the next one, uh, listed zoning amendment number four is about the uh, adding medical centers or clinics, including accessory research by rights um, in the central commercial district. I wanted just we moved to that one. I know the ADU is, as we've talked about, very complicated. I was hoping we could move to that and then seek input from the public if people have pressing things they wanted to mention on those initial four and then go on to the ADU.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so that's uh, again, allowing medical centers and clinics by right in the central commercial zoning district. Is there any uh, you had already spoken to that, Eric? That was something. Any um, comments or questions? About that? Was there any concerns about that?
I have concern, I sound.
Please.
We're talking. We'll take the sound the way I'm going to sound, but um, I guess I'm concerned about when you say clinics, what kind of clinics? What kind of clientele the clinic's going to have? As a clientele, going to interact with the public. It's going to be, that's, you know, that sounds really harsh. I apologize if it does, but I just know that's a reality, at least what I know. Cause I, I, I know some people downtown that had issues with people falling down in front of their stores or sleeping in their store, in front of their store and being like, I don't know if we want to just allow any kind of clinic. I don't know. Maybe I'm old school. It's a old fashioned, I, I mean, it sounds as I just, I just, I'm worried about the type of people that may be walking around downtown, interacting with everybody else. And is that really what we want to allow by right? That's.
Well, you bring out a good issue because the benches and chess board have been removed for that very reason.
Yeah, I, I don't know how to, you know, we have, there's a population that needs, needs to be treated with respect and dignity. I'm all for that, but they need to do, they need to reciprocate it. And uh, sometimes it's not reciprocated. So I'm not sure how that. I want to, I don't want to encourage more. Sure, hear about this.
Is there a, you helped us kind of parse the, the definition, Eric, like I mean, I, I can imagine what a medical center and a clinic, that this could be a pretty broad definition. Does, does it include a dentist office? Does it include a hospital? What are the other uses that you started to get to that aren't this?
Everybody have the zoning ordinance in front of them? There is a definition of medical. Somebody can read that. We'd, we'd have the definition right there.
I need to bring my ordinance every time. Keep forgetting.
Office and our examination rooms for providing diagnostic outpatient medical or dental treatment and care for human patients, appoint physicians, dentist, nurse. Nurses and other medical support staff may include laboratory and outpatient surgical facilities, but shall not include overnight inpatient medical, dental and surgical care facilities.
And what was that under?
Medical care.
Medical, I think.
Yeah. Page eleven. It's not another use with the word medical. It's possible.
Says for human.
Veterinarians. Seem very different.
Well, I guess one, one, um, I'm, I'm thinking of what Joanna was talking about. As well. And I think, you know, when we're. as well, and I think, you know, when we're talking about a, a treatment facility um geared toward um uh, folks who are um who are seeking care and um the other, they are members of the public um as well, and uh there's obviously significant societal issues we're dealing with, I don't um and, you know, there's debate about how to deal with those as uh, as people might have seen, you know, the the rule of benches and the table, uh, chess table, there was mixed reaction uh, to that, and it's a challenging situation that's being dealt with in a lot of communities, um, I wouldn't think that uh and there are, there are currently various types of uh, uh, clinics and treatment facilities that are downtown, and that's what you were speaking to.
Yeah.
Right, no, no, I mean, I'm sorry to Eric about.
Yes.
They're pre-existing, so.
Pre-existing. They weren't permitted, what did you mean by they weren't permitted? You used the word they weren't permitted. That you were trying to fix it with this.
Oh, the, you mean the medical.
Existing buildings.
There are existing facilities that are, where these medical facilities are in already that did not get a special permit.
Special.
So they're in non-compliance. And quite frankly, for the city to actually go after all those individuals and have to do all this enforcement action, it'd be too much, it couldn't be done, this amendment here would address that. And not just to address that issue, but it may make sense to do regardless of that issue, but at the same time, it would address this huge issue of unpermitted medical facilities in the CC district.
I think it is.
I think it's happened.
I know my, and I know you were uh, speaking, Eric, to the uh, shift of uh, uh, the nature of downtowns away from retail, but I, I, I know I still, maybe I'm old school, but I, I uh, still um, think that it's, it's important to have some mix, mix of retail and service uh downtown, and that would be my only hesitation about this is squeezing out potential retail, but obviously we have a number of vacant storefronts, so it's a tough argument to me. Any other?
I think we just, you know, just leave things alone and uh, you know, as the, if in any of the clinics at some point close their doors, we can, you know, you don't have to, you don't have to renew it to another clinic unless you don't have the special permit. But once it expires, it expires and then it's back on the rolls to deal with as we want to, I don't think doing this to, to make them legal is really the right, I think we're opening another door we don't want to open to try and make something that's wrong, right?
No, we, we, we think.
Wrong.
Yeah, we think separately from the issue of, when I say we, Mark Snow and I.
I'm just, I'm using a big we, all of us.
Yeah, um, uh, it's the issue of special permits not be, you know, being had in these existing facilities. Regardless of that, we think it's a good idea to do this amendment because you can do a home occupation in residential districts right now in our zoning ordinance and, and have a medical office at your single family home, but you can't in the central commercial district. To us, it didn't make sense.
Other board members want to weigh in? Initial reaction?
I, I can see the politics of the, like, amendment, and, you know, we can decide to go there or not, as a, a board. As, you know, there's other uses, permit, special permit uses that probably should be by right too, that are consistent with what you'd expect to see in the downtown. So if we took that perspective, yeah, medical centers are downtown, that's, that's where we see them. This, like, that, that use type is in the downtown environment, the council could figure out the politics of what that might mean to you. Like hotel, why would? That's the sort of thing you see in a downtown, and it seems like that shouldn't be, if, if a medical center is gonna be by right, it shouldn't lodging be by right? I mean, there'd be other rules that make it not look like a suburban hotel, it'd be an urban hotel, or if there isn't rules that make sure that's the case, we'd wanna add those rules too, but from just a land use standpoint, medical is a downtown use, hotels are downtown use, and research and development, you know, in the right kind of building is a downtown use.
So you suggest perhaps we should take a more holistic look at all the uses in the downtown and kind of look at it all at once, instead of like just piecemealing this one?
Well, again, in an, in an ideal world, when we recodify way down the road, and there's the, there's the ideal situation, which isn't often reasonable to try to do in one meeting, so I'm just trying to, trying to find a way to think about it that's kind of headed towards an end game that's a more perfect union.
Yeah.
So to speak. Now, fixing non-conformity is a thing, there's a lot of communities in the state that are mostly non-conforming, ninety plus percent of all parcels are non-conforming in a lot of places. That creates a lot of problems for people, I mean, for building departments, for planning departments. Sometimes we just go and recodify the zoning to make it so that most things are conforming. Because that's what's on the ground, if there's certain things you don't, I mean, not necessarily wholesale, but there is a logic to doing that.
And that's what happened in nineteen eighty-nine when the current district boundaries, you see on our zoning map, that, that's what they did. They looked at existing land use and said, let's record, recodify everything to make sense.
Unless you don't, I mean, yeah, you can pick out things you don't like, but yeah, if it makes enough sense, make it legal. We could also just not comment on this particular one if we feel like it's too touchy.
Any other comments or questions about that one? From the board?
Is our, is what you're gonna take from this just what we say out loud, or do we, no motion, it sounds like, that we're not like, that's what we're gonna say officially?
So it's just one city councillor, you know, and I sit on the EDC and that's five, four other people, you know, so it, one thing I would love though is if there are changes made, you know, in this meeting for them to Marian Bullock, who's the chair of EDC, and John, just so they know. So I know, for example, like, you know, the ADU piece passed a match state law, so you made it ma- match state law.
Yeah.
And so, but just making sure that's clear, you know, just conveying as much information as possibly fabulous. But I'm here because I wanna know what's going on, so.
So are the minutes capturing the tweaks, do we need to do it in a different way?
Well, so, so far what I have is that um allowing what that family dwellings in semi-residential district is what's gonna be moved forward, um. There was discussion of adding additional districts, but I don't think that was decided on, I think is that.
Yep.
Um, there was significant on the second one, number units per building, residents growing, so no decision has been made on that though.
But we have, you basically said our reputation, just of our discussion.
Right, yeah, exactly. Exactly, that's in the.
Just of our discussions. They can.
The only concrete thing is that we did seem to come to consensus about in the amendment number three about the first floor, just reading the language.
The language size.
Yes, which is even pretty minor, but might be helpful.
It might be helpful, I can do that, yep.
Your turn, maybe a point of information to ask a question.
Uh huh.
Um. Are you, are you making motions tonight?
Nope.
On something that's going to public hearing?
No.
Is this gonna be part of the amendment seven, these, these list of, of items?
Yes, these are, these are the items that are gonna be.
Wouldn't you wanna have the public hearing and then do what you're doing now? Seems like you're starting to say, we prefer this and we prefer that, as if you were going to make submissions to the, the council for having comments from the public, because the public may change your mind, let's say.
Absolutely.
And I, I just don't understand what's going on, I mean.
The only thing we were suggesting, as I was just saying, it's concrete, is a couple of words in that one sentence.
Well, I'm hearing more, I'm hearing, I'm hearing more substantial, a lot of things here that aren't in the amendment, limit, amendments, and the purpose of the public hearing is to inform the board so that
Absolutely.
When you have this discussion, it's based on what you heard people say.
Yep.
As opposed to what the members here tonight might intrinsically feel about.
Yes, no, the point is taken, yeah.
Okay, I just, I'm, I'm just confused by, I wouldn't take any motions tonight, I thought this was just a discussion.
It is, we haven't made, we haven't made any motions and.
We're making sure we got a note, Trey.
Yeah. Uh, so I, if there's no more board discussion on that last one, on that uh, I wanted to open up for some, uh, appreciate uh, patients, folks' patients, I know, I first uh, heard Stephanie Chime in, uh, and then I heard Al behind me, and then Christine Midori, so Stephanie, on any of these uh, first four items, did you have something you wanted to share?
Yes, I wanted to speak to the medical facility um clinic definition, and I had sent an email to Eric and the mayor and several members of various boards that this directly affects me and is part of litigation, that if this language changes, I will be adding that to that. And that um, I'm, I asked for a public hearing very specifically on this, it's regarding the, when you look at the laws, it, it's regarding the amount of traffic that particular type of entity or business uh, creates for a district, and that's why it goes to a special permit hearing, because it addresses the concerns of the neighborhood. So when you take away a special permit hearing, you don't listen to the constituents and the people who actually live in the neighborhoods, and the decisions aren't arbitrary because you've taken the input of the people who are directly impacted. That's all I wanna say, um, Stephanie Duke Close. One sixty-six Chapman Street, just for the record, thanks.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. And Al, had you wanted to comment, now if you can come up here just again for the mic, I can capture it, thank you, John.
Do you want me to not comment about yet the ADU?
Not yet, yeah, I wonder, it's just so complex.
Don, just, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. Just on these things that you've just gone over, I'll try to be fairly brief. Um, I believe that Robert Frost was wrong, that good zoning makes good neighbors. And um, I get very nervous when I hear a board discussing broadly expanding by right here, by right there, by right, and I think echoing what, what Stephanie just said, um that by right zoning means the neighbors lose their basic right to testify uh, uh, on a land use issue that affects their property because they're a butters. Um, the notice of proposals don't even often reach them, at which I think you've talked about before here. And they cannot seek adjudication um, under chapter forty-eight if they're not supportive of an abutting land use, in other words, they have very limited rights that are taken away from them, and as neighbors, um, play a very minor role. And the second major thing about by right is that uh, the difference between by right and special permit is why, why do we have special permit in our, in our zoning at all? We have it there because the, the, the review that's done during a special permit is much more extensive and, and has more guidelines, uh, not guidelines, but requirements, um, decision requirements that uh, that do involve questions about is, is this compatible with the surrounding community, what, what are the the implications for the values of other property, et cetera? Um, and all special permits have to have a site plan review, but the same obviously is not in the reverse, site plan reviews alone never have special permits, so as a result neighbors are, are generally wanting to see the projects get done right, not to necessarily say, we don't want this, we wanna stop it, but they want it to be done right and they want it to be compatible. Um, and some of the issues about, for example, about medical, medical centers in community, CC district, I'm, I'm okay with that, uh, because it brings people downtown, these are not, these are not people seeking help with you know, marijuana dispensary, or we have a question on the ballot in about a month in, in this uh, state about psychedelics. But I do think, but I do think this special permit is a more contemplative and thoughtful process, and it really concerns me that we're talking about making so many by right changes, and I think you'll hear some of that from the public on November seventh, but um I did, I did wanna say that um by right, in my mind, is an affront to the neighborhood. Because it tells them that, that, that the, the parcel of the business is more important than you are, uh, as opposed to we're gonna do this collaboratively. Um. And so um, I, I just wanted to say that at this point, I have, obviously, imagine I have a lot to say about ADUs, but I did wanna say that um I don't know, I don't, you know, the whole discussion about how many units you're gonna put in a building, how high it's gonna be, these are things that I think should all come under in, in the special permit category, if it's a, like, for example, I I get nervous every time we talk about five-story buildings, which may be an unusual reaction, you might say, but, you know, I live near the high-rise, and I, I keep imagining, how did this ever get built? And the reason it was built was pre-zoning. But I don't want, I don't wanna see, you know, and the, and the mayor has talked about the, the cheapest way to, to build is to build up. These things all make me concerned about the, the character and the quality of life in this community, and I'm not alone in that feeling, so I just that, that's all I would share at this point, like, is that I think by right is, is a mistake.
Thank you. Christine Midori, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Hi, everybody, it's Christine Midor.
Thank you.
No, my video's not working. Um, so Christine Midor from Massachusetts Housing Partnership, I am uh, the director of community assistance here, and we happen providing direct technical assistance to the city of Greenfield to develop affordable housing in your downtown area, oh, there I am. Uh, so we started with um, providing assistance to one seventy-six Main Street, and now we're in the process of helping the city um, explore feasibility of housing at fifty-three Hope Street, which is the former temporary fire station. And we were looking at some of the zoning that would um, impact development potential on the site, and noticed that there is a unit cap of fifty units per building, as well as the number of units of per primary entrance, and also the separation of the buildings, and so I, I just wanted to speak to that proposed amendment, and I understand that there's a fair amount of consensus already around eliminating those uh, requirements, but I just wanted to share another perspective from um, MHP, who provides technical assistance and help finance these affordable housing projects, and so I wanna really stress that these requirements, especially these unit caps, have a disproportionate impact on the production of affordable housing. And just within a half mile of fifty-three Hope Street, there are four affordable housing projects, so I, I actually listed them on my, on my notes. So on Congress Streets, there's Greenfield Acres, it's a building of ninety-four units, it's a eight-restricted senior housing um, building, there's the Weldon Hotel on High Street, that's also a senior housing of a hundred fifty, a hundred and five units. There's Mill House Apartments on Wall Street, a hundred and three units, and then there's Arbers at Greenfield on Meridian Street, that's seventy-two units. So you already have precedence of, of buildings that have more than fifty units, all of which serve people who are seeking affordable housing, whether they are elderly, uh, older adults or people with disabilities. And I just also wanna add that in order to finance these subsidized affordable housing units, developers typically have to rely on subsidies and tax credits, and the low-income housing tax credit is the primary source of funding to build these projects, and most developers would not consider a project that is under sixty units in order to make it financially feasible. So if you're limiting the size or number of units in a building, it could significantly impact the financial feasibility of affordable housing. And when I saw these numbers, starting with twenty-four and now potentially fifty, as Eric had pointed out, these numbers are really arbitrary, and you're not really thinking about what you're trying to mitigate by putting these requirements on, on, um, based on zoning. So if you're trying to mitigate the design and bulk and scale of the building, it's, it becomes a one-size-fits-all solution for different types of parcels of different sizes, different locations and suitability. But the difference between the fifty-unit building and the fifty-one unit building is for developers a difference of financial feasibility. And I just heard from Council Garrett that housing affordability is a top-top concern in the city of Greenfield, and in my work in the last couple of years with Greenfield, that is the same that I hear, and I, I see that Susan is here as well, and so I, I wanna make sure that these um, changes in zoning, whatever change is proposed, does not hold you back from creating more affordable housing for people who desperately need it in your community. And just, I know that this is just a discussion now, and then you're going to um, hold a joint public hearing with the city council. I'm also happy to testify at any of these meetings and work with you. At any of these meetings and work with you. Um on answering any technical questions you may have and how that impacts the production of affordable housing. So. I think. That's all I wanted to say, but I really appreciate all the thoughtful discussion that's happening here, and please feel free to reach out to me. Um Eric knows my contact information for any questions you might have around affordable housing. Thanks for taking the time.
Thank you. I see a hand for John Anholz. If I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Hi, thank you. All right. Um so I'd like to speak about the ADU portion. So Al Norman and his group proposed. Large, size, open space and setback. Can you hear me?
Yes, we're gonna, we haven't discussed that yet. Excuse me, John, we haven't gotten to the ADU portion yet. I was taking comments on the other board that we've covered so far.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, but I'll keep you in mind. Sure. Is there anyone else who is online or behind me that wants to comment about the the initial four? Proposals? Okay. So the next one is um. Close amendments to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance to meet the Affordable Homes Act signed by Governor Hewitt. And. I want to, and obviously this has also been initiated. Be a public hearing on this. At our next meeting on November seventh, joint public hearing. And I'm also aware, I assume everyone has come into this, that there's another citizen-initiated. Process in the pipeline related to ADUs that addresses some other things. It's not before us yet. Uh but it's in process as far as I saw on the recorder. So um. So this uh is to take into account um the new state law. The looking over the um changes, the owner occupation eliminated. And um. It uh was uh rendered uh detached, was rendered by right. All are by right, except in um. Certain uh CC or DC or GI, that's where a special permit would be needed according to this. Thing. So that's just a basic overview of. As far as this proposal. Other? From the board, comments or questions?
I guess I'm still not at all understanding the the overwhelming negative responses when there's, again, this goes back to the discussion we had earlier with Jeff. There are zoning laws in place already, which which limit what you can put on your property. So. You know, if all of a sudden everyone in the town decided to build battery storage facilities. As big as an ADU on their property, I don't know if they'd be the same how quiet there is for an ADUs. I mean, it's a place for people to get a house, it's a place for people to rent. And actually, and there is there are laws in place that restrict what you can put on your lot. So it seems that they're picking on one issue. We don't want those. If someone wants to build a workshop, let's say I want to build a carpenter shop on my property, I can build a carpenter shop on there, I can be banging around with hammers and. Saws till all hours until the law and the floor tomorrow. So there's. That's again, that's by right on my property. It's all the meeting and the requirements on my property. I don't think that that's, I don't understand the resistance and the overwhelming reasons. There are ways to prevent it. If it doesn't fit on the property, it won't happen. Permit will not be issued. That's that's the bottom line, but if it's if it meets all the requirements to property, people should be able to build what they want. It is, I don't understand the picking on ADUs.
I'll I'll just observe that there's been strong opinion and feelings expressed from both perspectives on this issue and. It's good that we're having a discussion and this new state law has really, I mean, this, the the ADU has been. Having been through the earlier iterations when this initially came through and and um. Uh did not go through the first time. This has been a somewhat contentious um issue um from the start in this community. Uh but it was approved, and now with the state um. Uh situation that has changed, this is the response to the state mandates and the citizen. Uh initiative, I believe, is a additional response to see within those guidelines what could be changed. Other comments?
I have a question, and I I'm hoping Eric can maybe guide the conversation, but. This is where I'm mostly interested in hearing from the public on is. If the changes are in line to change the zonings to meet the enactment of law. Then what wiggle room do we have to? Really object to the change?
The laws, um there's a summary of the law, what you can and can't do based on the new law, so. One, you can't inquire a special permit for ADUs. Two, you can't restrict them from being both rental units. And there was a third one out there, but you are allowed to do. Regulations like site plan review and bulk requirements, setback requirements, things like that. You're allowed to do those types of things. But not the the things that.
So do these changes, are these only incorporating? The changes to the law?
Yes, what I've proposed for amendments directly addresses the law so that we meet it.
So that we're in compliance with the.
With the new law.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't, yeah, nothing about any other ways to address it, just meeting the law.
Okay.
And one thing, and I'm, I haven't looked at official documents about it. I was um. Um using as a source from the twenty-third, I was trying to do an article in the recorder about this. And one thing I saw is that from the point of view, you were mentioning rentals. Eric, and it does indicate that there's some um possibly restricting short-term.
Short-term rentals, that was the third thing. You can restrict short-term rentals.
And the other, the other thing I was.
Yes.
Like Airbnb, like Airbnb, you provide Airbnb. Meaning that you couldn't create an ADU solely for that purpose.
Exactly, or even use it for that.
For another purpose and then you did it for that purpose.
The other thing I noticed, again, in this article, but I don't know how official this is, Eric. Is they had very uh um as far as parking, they um.
That was the third thing, parking.
Say again?
That was the third thing, I forgot, parking.
Yeah, because they say that uh any um. Any ADU that's more than half a mile away from commuter rail or a bus station. Cannot have more than um. Cannot require uh more than one parking space, and anything that's ADU that's within a half a mile. Uh cannot require any parking. And I know our current zone and uh current ordinance and in this. You know, um proposal, it still retains a minimum of two.
Yeah, I can I can explain all that.
Please.
So you had both Council Garrett and Al brought up this issue as well. The language that I'm proposing to keep in there, it still meets the law. It's saying a minimum of two. But no more than four for available for the use of the home occupants and tenants. In other words, the entire parcel. So if you have a single-family home. Zone ordinance order requires one off-street parking space for dwelling unit. And so we're saying that we're adding one, that's it. But you can add more if you want, but you can't add more than four, so we're setting a maximum two. But this other sentence is not in your. Uh packet in language that I added here that needs to be added, and it was brought out by both Al and Council Garrett. That I didn't include here. So there's a sentence that we need to add to D five. Would be off-street parking is not required for an accessory dwelling unit located within one-half mile of a commuter rail station or bus station. That would have to be added into the ordinance to comply with the law.
Good, thank you.
So you would, there's a situation where you might. Minimum of one, you could just have one off-street space. If you're a single-family home with an ADU within the half-mile of a bus stop.
Why not?
Yeah, so then this would, okay, so that's that's an alternative. This would be an alternative. To to five. Like that's five, if you're outside of a half-mile and.
Yeah, this addresses both situations. So if you're not within that half-mile, then you need to provide a minimum of two, and that's for the whole parcel, so. And but if you are within that half-mile, no parking can be required for the ADU, but you can still require. Well, in the CC district, no parks required, period. But let's say. It's not in the CC district, you can still require parking for the single-family home. One dwelling, one park space required.
You can require.
You can, if it's if it's.
If the law doesn't require that we require parking space for an ADU. So to be most permissive, we would not require. A parking space to be associated, off-street parking space to be associated with that ADU, any any part of the city.
Oh, that's what you're suggesting.
We don't have to, it's not telling, it's it's setting a floor, not a ceiling.
No, exactly. If we wanted to eliminate parking for ADUs, we could do that, or we did that.
One other um detail I noticed is D four. There's a maximum of nine hundred feet or one-third of the total gross floor area, the largest existing unit in the home. But the new state law allows ADUs under nine hundred square feet to be built by right. So anything, so it wouldn't allow what is suggested there.
Uh you might have an older version, because I know I crossed that other sentence, ah, because it should be just the maximum. Gross floor accessible dwelling shall not, shall be nine hundred square feet, period. It ends there.
Oh, the the. What I saw about the law was that. The max. Should be one-half of the total GFA of the of the principal dwelling. And I was curious what that means.
Whichever is less. Whichever is less, actually, so.
Well, if 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 the maximum size of the ADU. Was limited to the. The lesser of the two, which would probably be a third of the largest unit, you could have a five-hundred-square-foot unit in a building. And that means that the ADU, the biggest ADU you're allowed to build is a hundred and thirty square feet, which is not. That's 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 not going to happen, so. We don't want the maximum to be a tiny, tiny little number that isn't a realistic dwelling unit. So my understanding was that the the max is nine hundred feet. Or half of the total gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is less.
Yes.
Now, is the prince, is the total gross square foot of the principal dwelling the building? If it's a multifamily, if it's a two-family?
It would be, say, a single-family building, so whatever that area is.
What's the two-family, I guess, my question. So you're referring to unit in the old language, not building.
That's a good question. I would say that it would have to be with that unit. And not the total units combined.
Principal dwelling is. The biggest unit if you're in a duplex? Or is it the whole building?
Well, that's another issue that I'm going to bring out next, um. Which maybe I'll go and do it now. I mean, the law says a single-family, you know. We're we're progressive and we're allowing. Right now in our ordinance already exists, we're progressive in saying you can do ADUs for single-family and two-family. Why? Because of the amendments that went through several years ago with Council Don't, we're. Where one and two and three families are allowed by right in all residential districts, which is progressive, and most towns don't do that. Most communities don't. They have single-family districts, two-family districts, three-family districts. We combine them all in all residential districts. That's very rare. So the language I kept here, it kept the existing scenario. To meet the law, but both with one and two-family, then. So we need to have a bigger discussion of. Do we still want to allow the two-family in this scenario? As it already exists in our ordinance, or do we want to strictly limit it to? Single-family homes.
Why would that matter? It's got a max, it can't be bigger than nine hundred square feet. It's, we don't care what how big the primary building unit is at all.
And that's, yeah, so it sounds like that's the change that you made that isn't in our. So you just said the max of nine hundred feet, period.
Period.
Okay, that's what you're saying makes more sense.
Yeah, that's it. If you've got a primary building unit that's four thousand square feet, you can't build a two-thousand-square-foot.
But let me retract that, because I have so many problems going on, one versus one. So. The memory's coming back. So no, this language is correct because it is what you said, and so that's, I got. Crossed off here greater and just put the word less, because it's that great. Right now, right now, in our ordinance, if you had a five-thousand-square-foot, ten-thousand-square-foot house, who has a ten-thousand-square? But theoretically possible. One-third of that is a three-thousand-square-foot ADU. That's huge.
Maximum is nine.
So that's why it's less with the new law, but it's saying fifty percent of the floor area, which is even greater than ours of one-third.
Why do we want to mess with the floor area of the house? Why do we even care? The maximum we can build is nine hundred square feet.
The summary of the law says that we can say it's a maximum of nine hundred. So we could decide to do that. We just can't make it less than nine hundred for the max.
You can't say it's a five-hundred square.
I think we can make it less. I think nine hundred is a large unit, and it's prohibitively expensive. It's excessively large in many cases.
Yeah, no, no, nine hundred is the max, that's right. The total max, you can't do more than that. But according to the law. That you, you know, if it's fifty percent of the floor area, whatever you just said, in theory, you have a huge.
Then you get to the nine hundred, but most units are much smaller than that, and typically you would not hit the nine hundred, I think, under normal circumstances. So my question is, is that, and in the law, it's a half, not a third.
Exactly.
Is that based on a unit within the building? If we're talking, maybe this, you know, you're saying is we haven't figured this out quite yet, because the way we set the math up initially was. Because we were anticipating multi-unit.
Yeah, we haven't, I haven't figured this out exactly yet. I mean, the summary of the law, you know, I read the whole thing, but the the summary is nice because attorneys put it together. You know, I mentioned this, and that's where this amendment came from, so it it says nine hundred feet and then, or. I have one-third here, but it's it should actually be amended to say the fifty percent of that. So I have to go back to the law, make this language work to meet the law.
We just need to make sure that we we don't find us, that there are too many circumstances where your maximum. ADUs is going to be so small that it doesn't make any sense.
We don't want that.
It won't be built.
Eric, let me ask a figure-of-process question. So um. But from what I understand from this article, there's a certain amount of window of time that municipalities have to come into compliance. And.
February second, twenty twenty-five.
And there's um obviously, you know, um details, we're still trying to get a handle on. And we have this other um, we have this other um initiative in the pipeline. From a citizen initiative, citizen petition. And um. So I'm wondering what would make the most sense as far as, again, we're gonna, this is up for um the um. Uh public, joint public hearing uh in November. So, but we could always, again, put a negative recommendation if we thought. Well, we need more time to get this sorted out and have it. Potentially incorporate these other proposed changes that are coming from a different, you know, extent of, I'm just, I'm just trying to get my.
Citizen petition article?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to get my head around, because it's influx, and we have some time. And to get it, you know, to try to get it right and to, you know, consider all these different um angles on it. Just just throwing that out there.
And I would recommend that whatever we put together and before any official vote. Gets done, that we send it to our attorney for a review to make sure it meets the state law. All these things that would like add this one sentence about off-street parking that required for the half-mile, that's, it has to be there, it's not a significant change. That could easily move forward. And that one sentence about uh the size of it could be done as well, has to meet the law. And it can move forward as is. And, you know, the attorney could review and make sure it is in compliance with the law, but I think it is once those two things are addressed.
Could we ask the attorney to point out if we're going above and beyond? The law, we're gonna, do they have that?
Sure, yeah, we could do that.
Just to see, I mean, to me, the highlight areas that exceed. Yeah, so there's, there's the state law, we have to be compliant with the state law, and then there's all sorts of ways you can. Add things that make it. I mean, the state law might set a minimum. We can add more than that as a minimum. There's all sorts of ways to work around a state law to undermine its intent. And so we just make sure we're not doing a back. Happens all the time, every, just, it'd be interesting to know, to have those flagged objectively. This is, this is like. We're as strict as the law here. We're less strict, we're more permissive, we're more restrictive, just like from the attorney's standpoint, just to kind of. Get a scorecard of how we're stacking up across all the things we have to change.
Well, you can be more restrictive.
You cannot be more restrictive than this law.
In the, in these. In, in the, in these parameters, but you can do other things that make it.
You can actually, this citizen petition article makes it, definitely you can do things to affect it.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. Would it make sense to somehow have this all get turned through and then? Put it together rather than make a change now and then make additional changes.
Yeah, well, I don't think we're making any changes. Now, we're about to hear a lot of discussion.
No, no, not tonight.
Okay.
This is, this version is officially in the pipeline. That's what I'm saying. And then there's another one that's fallen close behind. So for the same section of the ordinance, so it's a little tricky, but you know, I don't, you got to have the best.
Is the, what's this other one you're talking about?
The citizens petition that was just, I think it was article, you have it.
Is that?
Or it was submitted.
Is that a petition therefore, like something the council votes on and, and acts by force? Is it just an opinion of, of people? Okay. But not, this, this is a motion legally. A petition is, it's. A way of commenting.
Well, no, this is, uh, uh, and, uh, there's five ways to initiate a zoning amendment. And if you have ten signatures of registered voters, you are in fact initiating and equal to the planning board initiating a zoning amendment.
Or the council.
Or the council themselves, or the Franklin reason council governments, or the zoning board.
So this is a.
This will move forward and it has to move forward.
Yep.
Um, and the council has to vote on this.
Okay.
As written.
And they got a hundred and ten.
At the end of the day, it's all, the council votes always the, the final word.
Yes, yes.
And how do those, like, does that have substantial impact of the?
It does have substantial impact, but it is, it fits in the, the language of saying, here's what you can do. I suppose what you can't do. But that's why the attorney would need to review this to say, did you go above and beyond the intent of this law? By doing these amendments, are you still allowing ADUs in your community?
Yeah. Uh, the, the state does not review the ordinance. Like the, the three A. MBTA communities. Changes that, that came into play, the state has to approve the way that you respond to those.
Exactly.
And that's not the case in here.
That's not the case here. We would want our own attorney to review it to say, did we go above and beyond with these amendments? I mean, above the intent so that we couldn't do such amendments.
Eric, in, in this current version that we're looking at, was, was the short term rental that wasn't addressed in?
Yes. Me and an, and the one we put in?
No, no, the one that I did, um. I don't think short term is, we probably would want to do that because you can do that.
It sounds like that is addressed in.
That is addressed in this here.
In the pipeline.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Does that address current properties? You mean, was there already in existence?
Yes.
Good question.
I don't think somebody that's already built one would, would be affected by it.
Yeah, no, I would agree. I would agree with that.
It becomes a nonconforming use.
Exactly.
That was the logic for change in the medical center thing, was to avoid adding nonconforming uses.
So it wouldn't affect existing scenarios in, in my understanding of it.
Other planning board members, comments or questions for what we've. Hear more from the public.
Yeah, I might say a couple of things. Just, I heard something alarming at a previous meeting. I want to make sure everybody understands. That ADUs are optional. That people who own their own land can decide whether or not they want an ADU. People can't come and build ADUs on your land against your will. That was. Multiple people think that that's the case and that's not good. So that needs to be cleared up at every opportunity. Someone can't come from out of state and build an ADU on your property. You can build one on your own property or choose not to build one. On your own property. I think the other thing that needs to be clarified is that. ADUs are subject to the same setback rules and zoning building code rules as anything else. So you can't just stick one in your front yard because accessory structures aren't allowed in your front yard. And all the, and we could run through all the different setbacks that govern where you put your garage, where you put anything else, your house. ADUs have to follow those rules too. So. I think people's imaginations are, are maybe. That might help put people's minds at ease, I guess. There, there are lots of limits. To, to how these might come in existence and they're only going to be built by people who want to build them on their own property. Um, and a couple of the things that.
You're leaving something.
I'm happy to give you a sense. It's two minutes out. Thank you.
One other argument that, that I seen is the open space argument. And just to clarify the. I guess one, one omission from that argument is, is concern for other things that damage open space. Such as garages, pavement, trees, all sorts of things you can do to. Undermine open space on your own property that we don't have. That's not really part of the conversation. But that's the concern. There's a lot more things we can do to protect open space and to, to not mention any of those things except housing. Is suspicious to me. It, it seems like maybe we're not trying to protect open space. We're trying to stop housing. So.
That it?
Well, I'll say one more thing, remind you, sir. Uh, the pathway to homeownership, I know is another concern of, of you guys. Uh, I know a lot of people who can't afford a single family home, but can afford a two family residence because they can get rental income from the other property. That allows them to help pay their mortgage. And, and so sometimes a two unit structure, two unit property is the pathway to homeownership. And a one unit, especially if all the homes are too expensive and too big, is not a viable pathway to homeownership. The other thing that it does, if you let people build. Invest, develop on their own land, you can, you can cultivate local developers. So one of the ways we see to revitalize neighborhoods and kind of take control. Of the development scene in a community is to help empower local investors and local people. To start small, build a couple of units, maybe just one ADU on their own property. Learn what it means to be a developer, learn how to get financing for things, learn how to just become savvy in those ways. And then. Sometimes these people will start to become local developers of other properties in their community. And they start to displace the out of town, out of state counterparts. And people come from out of state, out of town because there's a lack of local competition. And they can, they can act, you know, they can do what they want. We need more local investors, more local developers and allowing people to build ADUs creates a, a pipeline for, for more of that at a grassroots level. Okay.
Okay, I said, um, one more thing.
In, in the Tuesday paper, there was an article, the petitioner's tightened regs for ADUs. There was one paragraph in here, which I not, I didn't want to, it says, the planning board proposed amendments to the city's cluster development ordinance, which establishes the ratio of open space to housing. For developers who wish to build housing units on open land. That's not quite true. We made a, it, it only if you want to do a cluster development. If you're looking to get more density on the land. There's a ratio, but if you don't want to do a cluster, there's no ratio. So like if you, if I buy, you know, acreage and it's, you know, there's, there's fifty acres of space, I can build on the fifty acres and not put any aside. For open space, but because I'm not doing a cluster development. So I, I don't know if that is clear here or not, because it makes it sound like anyone wants to build an open space has a, has a ratio. That's not true. So I don't know if we need to respond to that or clarify that or anything. It's, it's if you want to do a cluster development, there's a requirement. Other than that, there's no requirement. We didn't establish a requirement.
So the cluster development gets you more open space. Higher quality, more open.
Yes, but.
If you trade, it's the opposite.
Yeah, it did make itself.
Yeah. Um, I'm gonna call on John Anhalt, then Al, I know you here, uh. Wanted to get into, um, ADU conversation and then Susan, I see your hand and then I'll ask for more input. So. John, thank you for your patience.
Sure. Hi, thank you. And thank you, Jeff, and, and the last counselor, I don't know your name. Um, but, uh, you addressed a lot of, uh, the things I wanted to talk about. Um, and I know the petition was not on the agenda, but as we mentioned, at least four times now and is, is related to this. So, um. Uh, Al Norman's crew proposed this, this petition to restrict lots, uh, and to impose lot sized open space and setback restrictions. As a means to create a shadow ban on the recently passed ADU provisions of the Affordable Homes Act. Ironically, they oppose affordable housing advocacy in the name of homeownership. Like many aging, not in my backyard members of the baby boomer generation. Were born in a unique economic boom period. In American history that reached the windfalls of most other developed nations having been devastated during World War Two. They still believe in the so-called American dream model of detached, single family homes peddled by Fred Trump and other developers. But let's carry out Al Norm's proposal. The housing study calls for a minimum of almost five hundred units.
This is inappropriate.
Al just said he is against.
Mr. Anhalt? I just wanted to.
Inappropriate.
If you could speak to the issue and not make ad hominem comments, please.
I, I am not, I, I am speaking to the issues. Uh, let's carry out, um.
Leave the name out of it, please.
What name?
Talk about the message, not the messenger.
Right. You don't need to reference Mr. Norman. Please address the issue you're concerned about and what you want to share. Thank you.
Okay, let's carry out the petitioner's proposal. The housing study calls for a minimum of almost five hundred units. The petitioner just said he is against building up. If we assume the only place with sufficient land for five hundred single family homes is in the RC zone. Then the minimum lot size is almost an acre each. So let's call five hundred units at a little less than an acre each, four hundred acres needed to meet the city's housing needs over the next ten years. For comparison, that is more than. Ha, a quarter of the size of the Four Corners area. So now the petitioner, um. Is calling for sprawl. Ironically, out in, let's say, the meadows, and that is bad for preservation of open space. It's bad for sustainability. It's bad for affordability. Most recent homes like this are going for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is not affordable. Additionally, ADUs are an accessibility issue, which was on the agenda tonight. Opposition of this, uh, can be viewed as ableist. I myself am a hundred percent permanent and total disabled veteran. And I'm a special needs parent. In a built out city such as Greenfield, ADUs are one of the most direct ways to build accessible housing and get around some of the issues with. Um, modifying housing stock that, that was discussed in depth earlier. Um, this also includes single level granny flats that allow for aging in place. Additionally, the Massachusetts nonprofit Autism Pathways Housing Sites ADUs is one of the primary mechanisms by which parents can facilitate semi-dependent living. For autistic adults and for accessing certain benefits they otherwise could not at home. Again, opposition of, of these are ableist. Freezing Greenfield in amber will perpetuate a death spiral. Without new and revitalized housing, we will not be able to track or keep young professionals and families. We are already seeing this in demographics. We will not be able to attract new business because they will not be able to keep or attract their desired workforce. This will further increase the tax rate. While conversely, density will improve the tax rate. So this petition is, is begging for higher taxes. I do support the ban on short term rentals. I got that one part right. And to answer the counselor's question of why are so many older citizens against ADUs and. And all I see is it's the older generations are against them and the younger generations are for them. It's because they falsely believe it will decrease their equity. If you look at denser cities like Northampton or Cambridge, we will, we see that it is not the case. It increases equity. The other reason is the legacy of exclusionary zoning. It was a way to keep that class's view as lesser because those who needed to rent or needed to rent out an ADU to make their mortgage were not considered desirable neighbors. My grandpa, my grandmother was one of those. She was a refugee. My grandfather was a mechanic. They would not have been able to purchase their home if not for the rental income from their attached and detached ADUs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And, uh, just to add, trying to honor diversity of opinion, but at the same time maintain, um, respect and civility. So thank you for shifting the tone there. I appreciate it. Uh, Al, you want to speak to this, please come on. Thank you.
First, let me say thank you for, uh, pulling some civility in these discussions. I'm quite used to the, uh, personal attacks, but they really have no place in a discussion like this. I want to focus on a couple of things that I wrote to George and Eric today. That came out of an assessor's meeting that, uh, led me to think about things I had not thought about. With regard to the, uh, potential impacts of ADUs. So George, I have five questions here. I'm just going to read them.
And I, I think it got sent to all the board members. I didn't know if everyone got a chance to me.
Okay. Well, these are things that I'm throwing out as just questions that I think. We need to get asked. And I, I have to say that. Um, Eric, at the last meeting had suggested a, a work group on ADUs, which I wish had actually been done by the mayor. Because I think we would have, this isn't, this is one of those issues that I think through work group. Study, we might be able to reach some kind of agreement about, in the end, about what, what makes sense for ADUs because I began. Talking about this in twenty twenty when the city of Greenfield had, um. All ADUs were by, by right. And I said that, look, I, I don't care about what somebody does in their own home. If they want to add another unit in their home. I don't care if they attach it. So it's part of one, one unit. My only concern is over detached units, which end up wandering far away from the primary building. And sometimes within ten feet of another person's property line or their backyard. And we had a case in Greenfield that was unfortunate of, of that happening. Um, and in twenty twenty, the city council, uh, agreed. To make detached by special permit. Now, special permit does not mean no. Special permit means we take a very serious look at it and we listen to the neighbors. And that's the way the law was for four years. Um, there was no controversy. Uh, there was no one screaming about, um, all the ADUs that were being built. ADUs aren't being built. Because in most of the communities where ADUs are being built, that, uh, are frankly affluent white communities. Uh, that's what some of the research has shown because people don't have two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars to build an ADU. Um, and, uh, and to comply, uh, comply with other state building code issues. So I'm not, I'm not anti-ADU. I'm in favor of certain kinds of ADUs that are less. Um, uh, incompatible with surrounding properties and are more acceptable by neighbors. My house, for example, is, I'm surrounded by multifamily units. In a, in a zone that's called supposedly, well, it's just, it's just urban residential. Uh, my next door neighbor is a group home with at least nine people in it. Um, and across the street from me, multifamily. Uh, so I'm not, I'm not uncomfortable with, with, uh, people having, I, I live on a very small lot. Point two of an acre. Um, there is no room on my lot for an ADU. My neighbor would be pleased to hear that. But I'm, I'm here to raise, I want, I wanted to see if we could have the, the board look into these five questions. Number one. If you add a second kitchen, according to the state building code, and this was, this was from the assessor's meeting. If you haven't watched the, the tape of it, I would encourage all of you to do this. If you add a, a, a second kitchen, the state building code says it becomes a second dwelling. And then somebody becomes a two family home. Um. And I just, I would like to know definitively. The citation from the state building code, because I, I couldn't even, I can't even. That's a very long and complicated code. I'd like somebody to, to, to ask the, uh, building inspector to clarify for this board what, what they meant by that. The second question was, under a state building code, a three family dwelling needs to put in sprinklers. For example, if, um, if a, if a person buys a two family home. Under the assumption that they're going to live on the first floor and rent out the second floor. But then later on, they want to put an ADU in their back, backyard, will they need to sprinkler all of those units? Just a simple yes or no answer. Number three, with an ADU. You're connecting, you're creating another dwelling unit which has two exits. That seems to be, I, I don't know if that's a problem for some people or not, but that's another statement from the. Uh, the building inspector. Number four, under Greenfield's assessment system. A single family, uh, is classified as a one oh one unit. It's on, for example, on my property card, it says it's a one oh one. A two family is classified as a one oh four. Once a property becomes multifamily, its value goes down because it sells for less. And I put a question mark by that. Because frankly, I'm not, not sure that that's what.
Excuse me, point, point of order, hasn't, hasn't, um, the speaker spoken well over, well over three minutes?
I'm sorry, have to ask you not to interject, please. Thank you.
There's no three limit, minute limit on, on these meetings. It's up to the chair. I can speak as long as I want. Anyone can. Um. And then number five, does an ADU in Greenfield require a new land use code? Because of the state building code, will ADUs have to be defined as multifamily dwellings? And I just wanted to share that. Eric replied to that and said, I'm not sure. How the assessor will be treating ADUs. He seems to indicate at the last meeting that a new land use code would be used. And that it would not be classified as two family. Stay tuned on that one. Frankly, I wish this had gone to a study group because I don't think, I don't think this version. I went through, I'm not going to do this tonight, but I went through. The version that's dated September twenty sixth. I, Eric, you may have some more recent updates, but, updates, but. I have all kinds of questions about how this affects. For example, an ADU that has a two family. And they, as I said, they put in a three family. Does it need to be sprinkled? Um, because a lot of these, a lot of these sections talk about single or two family. Um, and I'm concerned about, you know, what that's going to mean. And I'm concerned about, you know, what that's going to mean for those. Do those landowners know that they could be facing some issues with the building code? And also, there's a line in here about units, detached units needing special permit. I'm not sure why they would need a special permit. I did, I do want, since special permits are not allowed under the state law, I do, I do want to also note that in the table of uses code, you've got ADUs in, in the CCLC, GL, not in open space, but a special permit in, in general industrial. I would strongly recommend to this board that you not support the ADUs beyond the Rs. You've got, you've got four R zones in Greenfield. And the state, the state, you'll notice that the state law only respects residential zoning. It says single family, but we all know there's no such thing really as a single-family zone. Where I live is an example of that. But why, why do we want to put ADUs in a, in a CC zone or in a general, general commercial zone? The state isn't, the state isn't mandating that. I don't know why we, why we do, why we would do that. So anyway, I, I have another number of other issues, but given the fact that you're going to have a hearing on November 7th, I just, George, I hope that you can have an influence with the EDC on that. I hope you'll let people's talk at that hearing for more than three minutes because these issues really are a workgroup issue. It would have been great to see that happen. There's a, there's a section, there's a section, only one accessory dwelling unit may be created within a single-family or two-family house. And then I wrote, good, but it conflicts with Section B of the ordinance, which, which says that accessory units would, you know, that would, they would become the third family dwelling. I, I just think there's a lot of problems here. Because of the interaction between this ordinance and the state building code, I think we just really need to get those things clarified, Eric. Maybe that's something you could easily do. It's hard, it's hard to go through that, that state building code ordinance. It's very, very difficult. So I'm just going to stop there because I don't, I don't want to take.
Thank you. I can address some of that just to start off with the sprinkler system. It's my understanding in state building code that talking about three units in the same structure that would require a sprinkler system. A detached ADU would not figure a sprinkler requirement for the whole property. But that's a given there. The land use code can't be answered now. No assessor. I talked to the assessor today, Randy Austin, chief assessor. He has groups that he meets with other assessors, statewide organizations, and they need to have discussions about this new law and figure it out with land use code. The codes that you reference, 101, 102, 100, those are statewide codes used by all the Massachusetts assessors. And so the assessors need to get together and figure out how this new law is going to. So that question is not answerable by anybody right now. They're still looking into it.
Just to be clear, that's, that's not the zoning code. That's, they use the word code, but it's the way that.
It's the land use code used by assessors in Patriot Properties and Vision and other assessing programs.
It's not necessarily the same.
It's not a zone.
It's not a zoning.
And also, assess value is different than market value or previous values.
Exactly.
So just because it assesses for one value doesn't mean that's what it is worth on the market or would sell for or anything else.
The, the issue there.
I just want to let Eric continue.
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
So let me see now. I do want to give other people a chance. The question number two, can you read that again now?
Question number two.
Sorry.
Sorry. Under the state building code, a three, a three-family dwelling unit needs to put in sprinklers.
Oh, that's that one. Okay. Three, then what was question?
With an ADU, you're creating another dwelling unit, which, which has to have two exits.
Yes, that, that is state building code. And the answer to that is yes.
Can I just make a footnote? Because I think it mentions something, something that Jeff just said about assessment versus other values. Yeah. The mayor was concerned about when your assessment is lower, you pay less taxes. And she was uncomfortable because that, that's, she wants to see revenue increase from assessments, not decrease. So that, that was the reason assessment was, was mentioned in that context, not, people understood there was a difference between market value and assessment.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Susan Morgaffit, thanks for your patience.
Thank you. I, I spent a little time this morning. My, my lot is actually smaller than Al's. Mine is point one seven acres. And I spent some time today playing around with ADU ideas. Not because I'm going to put one in, but because I felt that it was important for me to understand this. And it occurred to me in the middle of this process that we may be looking at this the wrong way. And I'm speaking in part to the petition that was brought up, but also just generally. When we start talking about ADUs and we start talking about the size of the lot and people are concerned about issues of, of green space within, within that lot and quality of life as a result. There may be another way to look at this. You can have a half-acre lot that has a barn on it and a big garage and a big house. And then try to put an ADU on it and you've got a small city. So looking at it from the point of view of the size of the lot may not be the way to go. What, what I'm thinking about and what I'd like to ask the board to think about is the idea of a ratio between the size of the ADU and the amount of land that is available within the lot that it's going to be on. So, and what I'm looking at, at is a two or a three, quote, open space, because I know that the definition of open space is different. But a, a, a community space, let's say, that would be two times or three times the size of the ADU. That would be part of the, of the process. So what that would mean is a 900 square foot ADU, which I know is a very large building, actually, is, would have, would need to have either 1,800 or 2,700 square feet in the property excluding any setbacks. So we're not talking about setbacks. We're not talking about any of that. The setbacks would be in addition to whatever would be, would, would be there as an available space. But that would allow a community, a, 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 a building to be offering, you know, a garden or some trees or whatever anyone wanted to do without hampering the fact that the ADU would be thereby right. And if that kind of an approach could be taken by the planning board, that would both offer a response to the, the comments that are made in the petition. Because as I say, you can have a big lot that's full of stuff in it and an ADU may not allow any quote, open space. And it would allow for people also to be able to regulate the size, understand how to regulate the size of the ADU in relation to what land they have. So that's, that's my thought and I wanted to put it forward. I also agree in, with the last two sentences of the petition, that accessory dwelling units should meet minimum setback requirements and that ADUs should not be used for short-term rentals. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else participating virtually or here? Please.
It's a sad time here. You guys are looking at yourselves. I don't know who wants to live in an ADU, to be honest with you. I know people like me, look like me, aren't interested in it. And I've talked to many people throughout this city. They're not interested. Okay. There's better ways to achieve housing. Give people dignity. Okay? Don't treat them and make them feel like they're subservient. Okay? These are not gentleman farms that you are creating. Okay? I hope you give it some serious thought here. We got over 110 signatures. These people value their space. Okay? Are you familiar? Do any of you know the head of housing for the state of Massachusetts? You don't? And you're pushing his agenda? That's sad. I think you need to do your homework.
That person's agenda or meeting the law.
Oh, the law isn't always right.
It may not be right, but.
It may not be right. You know what? What's that? Oh, so now you're saying I may not be right, but.
No, no, we're saying this that.
But I'm never wrong. That's what you're saying.
No, no, we're saying this. Let me finish my statement and you can talk as long as you want. We're saying this, this law passed by the governor by the state of Massachusetts. We have no choice but to follow it.
Okay. And that's good. You have until February to do that, correct? So why are we move, why are we pushing it?
That we meet the deadline. There's a couple of months away.
Why don't you invite Ed to the table? Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I address another issue?
Okay. I just want to get with what Al was saying about other special permits. So the existing ordinance of the ADU ordinance allows ADUs by special permit detached in other districts other than residential. That already exists in our ordinance. I didn't touch that as an amendment. If the board wants to rethink the entire ADU ordinance and look at that again, then you can do that. But I want to make clear it's already in the ordinance.
And that was under Section C, you added a number three that says when it requires a special permit approval. And that's in those non-residential.
Exactly. Precisely.
Yeah. State doesn't cover those sections. Anybody else either virtual or actual?
John Garrett, 93 Hope Street. I am also involved with trying to get this stuff passed. So I obviously, you know, my kind of position on the ADU piece. So there's been a number of questions kind of brought up over the course of the evening and there's, there's, you know, this could be a conversation that goes on for hours and hours and hours addressing them. One of the things that Victor asked earlier though was why is there such ferments in the community? And again, to use decorum and politeness, I'm not going to name any names, but there has been, so let me rewind really quickly. There's two phrases regarding information that is false, misinformation and disinformation. And I've been really struggling to figure out what's going on. Is it misinformation where folks are accidentally saying things about, you know, the way that housing costs work? And that is an honest opinion that I may happen to disagree with or think the facts are wrong? Or is it disinformation that's disingenuous and deliberately intended to obfuscate and obscure the actual goals? And so I'm unsure. And again, I'm not about to make any accusations of along any line, and I certainly won't. But the petitioner's petition is a shadow ban on ADUs and it's not solutions oriented. And so as far as this address, this particular issue, we have a housing crisis. The question was asked a moment ago, why, you know, work on this now by another speaker? And it's because we have a crisis right now. And the people that feel the crisis are the people that do not yet have the opportunity to have a roof over their head. And an ADU is an opportunity to build some units in the city and densify it, which is an opportunity that this people of Greenfield have in many different forums express an interest in doing so. You know, we have a housing crisis for a number of different reasons. One of the reasons amongst very many others and one of the potential parts of the solution, ADUs are not going to solve the housing crisis. But it is a chance to build more densely and it is a chance to give people accessible homes. And they are homes regardless of who owns them or what the story is behind how they got built. You know, I don't know how many homes will be built by this ADU piece if it gets passed. But there's a reason that the state legislature went and passed this over our heads. And the reason is veto points. One of the issues with zoning in general, and so what I mean by veto points is opportunities for folks to effectively inflict their will on others about their own choices. We've heard a lot about freedom. What about the freedom of people to choose what to do with their own property? That is, you know, you go back to John Locke, life, liberty and property is part of this. And that's what's being defended here arguably by the petitioner. But in reality, what you're asking, what is being asked for is a ban on effective ADUs in the whole city. If we kept the special permit requirement for attached ADU, it would permit far more ADUs than the proposed petition because of two reasons. There's nobody, barely anybody has a lot size over a quarter acre in downtown. And by that, I mean 91 and Route 2. I looked at the GIS map. I went through this and I was honestly kind of shocked. I, that that was the result. And then the problem is even if we're going to sprawl into the meadows, they don't have this, they have septic systems. You need to have enough, a large enough septic system to actually build an ADU because none of that changes. And so you're not even going to have them built in the meadows, even with a pro-sprawl sort of petition passing our council. As far as that petition is concerned, the last sentence is good. Banning Airbnbs would be fabulous and we should follow zoning and setback requirements. And in addition, with small lots, if you can't meet the setback requirements, you can't build the ADU. So we don't have a problem. I appreciate Ms. Morgaffit's suggestion of making sure the building isn't too big for the lot. But I think the pre-existing code already does that. We're not going to be putting ADUs right on somebody's property line. We're not building, you know, you can't, that the zoning and the setbacks, the setbacks don't allow that. So I would argue that is deeply misleading and part of the reason that, you know, Jeff in his meeting that he was running the other day had so many people so scared of terrible things happening to their properties. And it's just, you know, and, and I will give, you know, Jeff credit. He was able to clarify for that woman he mentioned. Then no one was going to force an ADU to be built in her yard. And she kind of said ADU and trailer in the same way. And so there was a plating of those issues too. But it's not right to make people scared of things that aren't going to happen to them. It really is awful to see somebody like that terrified that their taxes are going to go up when they're living a marginal life. They're, you know, shoot, this woman was on a fixed income. And that's exactly the kind of person that an ADU could potentially help by giving them a place they could rent maybe for cheaper than their full units. And so I'm really like, as I said earlier, when I was speaking to you guys, I am new to the zoning game. And my initial intention was to have a discussion, a robust discussion about what we could do. Then the state law, you know, came down and has these provisions. And I'm glad we're having this conversation and I welcome anybody to disagree with me and talk to me about it. But we should talk to each other again, you know, with respect and civility and be honest about what we're saying. If you don't want ADUs, say it. I do. And we should pass this. And that's really kind of where I'm at on this. Again, it's not going to solve the crisis, but we might as well try to do something. And that is part of the reason I'm on the city council is I want our government to do things to help people. It's very easy to come up with a list of reasons to say no. It's much harder to actually take action that makes a difference in people's lives. And so that's kind of my, that's, I could go on, but I won't. Thank you. Thank you for the time.
And I want to give Stephanie a last word. I'm aware of the time and I want to keep the board active and, and work here. So Stephanie, you have a last comment?
Hi. George, yes. I do actually have a very large ADU built in my neighborhood. It did go through a special permit process. It's quite a large ADU. It was much, much more than what I expected. Because I couldn't envision what the maximum look like on a lot.
All right, we're having trouble getting all your words, Stephanie.
That's a question from my.
In the first home, but that he had built that property. The, can you hear me better? Hello?
Yes, starting to hear better. Thank you.
Okay. So what ended up happening is the assessor came out, they reassessed the property, it ended up tripling the man's taxes. Because they reassessed the entire property. Here's one of my concerns. So we have a family member that provides a, you know, builds on their lot. Now the, the assessing department comes back out and reassesses the lot. Now your taxes are way out of whack. You didn't think you were going to be hammered with the three, you know, three times that tax bill. All of a sudden, you're coming in for abatements. If they don't give you the abatements, now you're struggling with your tax bill. And then we fall into this home equity, you know, game that we were, I think we just decided was unconstitutional. So my concern is, is that people might be biting off more than can, more than they can chew. I mean, we have this lofty, this lofty idea of ADUs. I'd love, I'd love to be able to put three or four, but I know that's not even possible on, on family lots in this town. But my concern would also be the homeowner, the original homeowner, do we? if they no longer can pay those taxes because of whatever reason, you got squatters, you got people who aren't paying the rent or whatever the reason may be. Now all of a sudden, you put a cost burden on the original homeowner who might end up losing the whole thing altogether. So then it makes it very right for a big developer to come in and take that from them or, you know, the city, you know, can negotiate some deal on the side with a bigger contractor that will force them out of their home and into an apartment or an affordable building because you've taken what they've, you know, worked their entire life because they decided to help somebody out, put an ADU on there and it went south. That's all I wanted to say was like, there's other concerns too. Please take that into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for your input. And it's obviously something that's a lot of perspectives and some strong feelings. So I'd say people trying to keep it civil. So unless board members have the last...
More questions. That was one other fear that people have that is not substantiated yet or might never be substantiated of out-of-state developers coming in, buying up property and building lots of ADUs. It's a coherent scenario, but it's not substantiated. I haven't seen evidence. So I think people who propagate that concept should point to where it's happened.
I think you need to do more research. And I don't appreciate when a person who is pushing the housing study on us as a consultant is continuing at this board along with the city councillor pushing this because it's an agenda. We have to look at this in total, will affect us in total.
Stephanie, I'm sorry.
And not trying to solve the world's problems. Thank you.
Thanks.
The other question, and maybe this is some homework for all of us, but the definition of open space and what currently governs open space, the impervious surface is one reason why we care about open space. It's to make sure there isn't too much runoff from one property to another. So that's why you can't pave your whole, well, I don't know what the thresholds are, but it's to keep people from creating so much stormwater runoff that they create problems for the neighbors or for just the infrastructure in the street. So I'm not sure that open space, open space is ground that excludes things like driveways and walkways. So using that as a base calculation might be problematic. And maybe we need to take a more holistic approach to how we measure built surfaces and not built surfaces. It's one of the many variables, I think. And I think it's a good idea to also talk to the building department and understand, how does this actually work in these more granular regulatory ways? But I'm not sure that zoning should try to step in and fix things in those realms that are really better left to the building department or engineers with impervious surface. So I think just getting all that figured out is a really good idea. So we do understand how these work in all the ways that matter as we make important policy decisions about them.
Thank you. So we're ready to put a close on this large discussion level? Okay. Moving on to board and staff reports. I know Victor, you had worked on...
I have something.
Yes, please.
Yeah, at the last meeting, there was requests raised by the public for access to documents. So I met with Eric, we talked about, and I was pleased to find out there already is a way to have access to the documents that are in these meetings. And what I put together was a little PowerPoint. It's basically just the slides, the print screen, the screenshots of how to get to the documents. So the discussion for the board, I guess, is over there. If this is okay, and I'm sure we could send it out. I didn't send it to everyone, just you two, so the rest of the board wasn't looking at it and commenting. Send it to them.
Oh, definitely.
But then, you know, where to place, and that was a topic of discussion was the meeting. Where to place it? And my assumption would be, if I were to say it's Planning Department on the web, you know, be the top line there that says "how-to." And it's basically four clicks of a mouse and you can get right to the minutes from the previous meeting, the agenda for the next meeting, all the documents that are going to be included in the current meeting.
I think it's a packet, right?
It's a packet, yeah. But it's all, and, you know, so it's already there. There's access to this document. It's just being how to do it. So I created the way to do it. The reason to put it, so if the board approves, you know, I've already talked to the webmaster and...
Actually, yeah, I can put it on myself. I'm kind of the webmaster for the...
That'd be fine. That's so, as long as you know I have it.
Yes.
I could forward it off to the rest of the board if it's your approval. I'll do that. And if they have any more comments, you can go from there.
Yes. Also, I'd like to mention that there's a couple places that already existed before public expresses concerns about lack of information. The information was available before they expressed their concerns. Two places. The new website has agendas, minutes, and a packet.
Right, that's what this is.
And this leads to that and this how-to guide. But the packet is all the applications or whatever we want to put up there. Also, under the Department of Planning Development, under Current Projects, you can click on there and every single amendment that we're imposing is on there, including the other grants that we're working on in our projects. So the information was there from day one.
They should have had access. So that's what we did.
Yes.
We're showing people had access. It's there. I was very crazy.
Can I say something about that? Sure, because I brought this up. Thank you.
Yes.
The transparency issue, which I didn't want to mention in my statement this evening. The problem is that when you go to the town's calendar and look up a meeting and you see that there's a meeting on October 3rd of the planning board, you will not find there a full agenda of packet. You won't find there a copy of the minutes because you were reviewing draft minutes. But you won't. I don't know what your minutes are. I haven't been able to see them. And there's no copy of the updated ADU ordinance. But I think that you're both correct that they do exist somewhere, but they don't exist, if you go to the city council website, they're all there. You know, like for the calendar. If you go to the calendar for the city council, there will be a link that says to see full agenda. And the minutes are there as well. So I'm just saying that it is absolutely true, I'm sure. And I know that from what Eric said, that there, you can find the packet for some means. And you can find some of the other stuff, but where most people are probably going to go is to the calendar to see what your agenda is. And when they get there, none of those things are there.
So you're saying adding a hyperlink in the calendar link would be most helpful?
That's what the council is doing. And I think that's, unfortunately, that's where the foot traffic is. It is on the calendar to find the current developments. I never do that until Eric told me.
I will say that's how I access the council agenda.
Yeah, so that's on the calendar. Yeah.
It's not that you asked, but I think Al was totally right about this. The calendar is definitely the best spot for it.
Yeah, no, that's easy enough. I know I could do that. Good suggestion. Thank you, Al.
Problem solved.
Problem solved.
Just wanted to know, we worked on the issue. We took it seriously. We worked on it.
And we'll put the how-to guide up there as well. Yeah.
So thank you for your efforts.
That would be helpful to find all the previous stuff.
Yeah, and that could be a link. Also, the link just to the planning board page could just be, oil and plate always on every calendar.
Yeah.
So even if, I think some redundancy is okay.
Yeah.
I guess, really. Are there any other things that would fit under board or staff reports? None? Next meeting date, as we've set, November 7th. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
No. Second.
Thank you.
All board members in favor? Thanks.